Great, hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one Imperial Beach City Council Meeting. Obviously, we're holding this virtually. Council members and staff, please mute yourselves, and when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I welcome, I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting and thank everyone for their patience and understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. This meeting must comply with Executive Order N. two thousand and ninety and all other provisions of state law. And now the city clerk will announce the public comment process. Thank you.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. As no breaks will occur between agenda items, please note in the subject line the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Written comments will be read by the city clerk or staff for up to only three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom via desktop computer, computer phone app, or telephone. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak and called upon. When it is the appropriate time, use the raise hand feature on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, City Clerk Kelly, please take the role.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Agiri?
Be here.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez?
Leyva Gonzalez here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Fisher here.
Mayor Protem Spriggs?
Spriggs here.
And Mayor DeDina?
DeDina here. Great. And now, I'd like every council, invite each council member to speak in the orders. They typically seated on the dice, starting with Councilmember Agiri.
Mr. Mayor, can we please do the pledge?
Oh, I am so sorry, of course, yes. City Manager Hall, can you please do the pledge?
Thank you, Mayor. Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thanks for that reminder, City Clerk Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And now, I would like to invite Councilmember Agiri to take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, good evening, everyone. Happy to be here again. On March fourth, I attended the International Boundary Water Commission Citizens Forum Board. We were joined by Mayor Gloria, who discusses priorities for the Tijuana River, and Vice Chair Vargas attended as well and gave a wonderful presentation about her background and her priorities as well for the Tijuana River. And we also discussed infrastructure improvements at the International Waste Water Treatment Plan and at the border. And we learned that we have yet to fill the position, the local position for area operations manager for the treatment plant there. And then, on March seventh, I had the pleasure of meeting with San Diego Port Commissioner Sadin Arango. She has been recently appointed by the mayor of National City. She's a longtime tireless advocate for environmental justice, and we discussed ways to collaborate on how to improve the environmental injustices that affect both of our cities, our region, and even legislation at the state level. And then, on March eleventh, I attended our regular MTS Board of Directors meeting. We discussed a couple of important items that are relevant to our city. We discussed a trolley extension happening right now in North County, which is set to launch in November of this year. We commissioned a Title VI analysis, and for those who don't know what a Title VI analysis is, it's basically determining if there's discrimination or denial of benefits from any program that is federally funded based on race, color, national origin, and whatnot. So, they did find that these improvements in the North County area would happen to non-disadvantaged communities. So, what we determined was to make some modifications to offset that, those improvements being made in North County to be more fair and equitable. So, what we determined is that we will be increasing the frequency on the blue line from downtown to San Isidro, increasing it to now every fifteen minutes of service, all the way from downtown to San Isidro. So, that's really important because the blue line is the backbone of our system and carries most of our workforce to and from where they need to go. The second great news that happened during our meeting was that we approved a fair reduction for youth passes, for one-way youth passes, from two-twenty-five to one-twenty-five. And we also made it free to transfer, to, you know, use one-way ticket transfers. So, if you take the trolley, want to transfer over to a bus, you don't have to pay again, and then you don't have to buy a day pass. So, that's going to significantly reduce the amount of money that people who have to take public transit are having to pay. So, feel really good about that. And then, on March twelfth, I attended the Sandag Board of Directors meeting as the MTS-appointed representative. We had a fantastic presentation on a panel, from a panel of economic experts, discussing ways and strategies that we could fund all these big and bold regional plans that we have in place, coming down the pipeline for twenty, for this year, and all the way up to two thousand and fifty. And then, today, I had the great pleasure of attending a wonderful women's celebration. I was invited by the U.S. Consul of Tijuana, was co-hosted by the new Tijuana Mayor Patricia McFarlane, and it was alongside a phenomenal group of leaders and of women leaders in our region, including our very own Sandra Cohen, who was invited as well to represent the city of Imperial Beach. I was very proud to have her there, joining us. Mayor Vincentidas was there, mayor of National City, and a number of different women leaders like I mentioned. And then, finally, I just want to announce tomorrow, I will be participating on a bi-national panel for Mexican women in leadership alongside Kenia Samarripa, who's a leader in the Regional Chamber of Commerce and a huge advocate for Tijuana River pollution cleanup, and some other phenomenal woman. That will be Facebook and YouTube, streamed on Facebook and YouTube at twelve-thirty. So, that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez?
Good evening, everyone. On the tenth of March, I met with Shakita Falls, who's the manager of the South County Service Center for Meals on Wheels. She invited me to be proactive in Champions Week, which is the March twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, and they're going to be providing meals to seniors in IB. I committed to the twenty-sixth, and I told her that I'll take a day off from work to go out there and be involved and serve meals to many of our seniors in the community. On the eleventh of March, due to our strikingly close resemblance, I filled in for Councilwoman Agiri for the MTS Public Security Committee. Primarily, what was covered is dealing with the transparency of the police units that are on the trolley lines, when they should turn on their cameras, how long they should be on, things of that nature. On the twelfth, I met with Grace Martinez. She's the director of ACE, which is Alliance of California for Community Empowerment. There were some members from the CS, the Mobile Home Park. There are other residents from the IB area that are really struggling during this time, dealing with not being able to pay their rent because of the pandemic, things of that nature. I definitely, we have a lot of work to do in that particular area. And today, I revisited the project on eleven-hundred Block of Holly, which is a project that's been going on, and I've received numerous calls from residents in regards to the street, you know, traffic control, dirt, things of that nature. So, I met with Dennis Lorti, who's the superintendent for American General Construction. He explained that SDGNE, there was an issue with the tie-in from the new development into the existing. That's all been resolved. He's telling me that within the next two months, that project will be completed. And I just emphasized him maintaining the swept, you know, the dirt in the street, the sidewalks. Residents were complaining because in that area, primarily, it's residents that own, and there's quite a few that are retired. So, he said he would do his due diligence to try to maintain that, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Fisher?
Yeah, hey, good evening to everybody. Happy St. Patrick's Day to all. Just kind of working with the residents here in District Two to kind of get a final plan on the traffic calming that they put in between Seventh and Ninth on Donox and Elm. So, we're looking forward to some public meetings and getting together with the neighborhoods and the neighbors on those streets. Other than that, you know, I've gotten a lot of correspondence, emails, texts from local people who are a little concerned about our homeless population and the growth of it and kind of where they're setting up camps, and I'm hoping that is in a future council meeting that we can sit back and, as a council, discuss what our plans are to help curb that a bit. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Mayor Protem Spriggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur, we need to have a discussion regarding the homeless situation. I've also encountered residents who have concerns about the growing population. On Thursday, the fourth, right after our last council meeting, I had a meeting with Metro JPA, was primarily an update on various developments, including the Pure Water Potable Recycling Program. On the eighth, which was Monday, I think, the San Diego Division of the League of California Cities met. This is a monthly meeting where all of the San Diego cities that are members of the league typically have a luncheon meeting, but it's virtual now, and everyone has an opportunity to hear speakers and updates, as well as indicate what's going on in their cities. And the board members and members of other league committees typically do update reports. And I was pleasantly surprised that my update on the work of the Coastal Cities Group of the League of California Cities, on which I sit as a leadership committee member, drew a lot of interest. There were a number of newly-elected officials who are very interested in getting more involved in coastal issues in our San Diego coastal cities, and I think that's really a good sign. So, we're going to have a special Zoom at some point in the near future where all of those interested parties and I can discuss what their issues are, and I can update them on what we've been doing. On last Friday, I met, I was, served as the alternate to the mayor on Sandag, and it was quite a long meeting, from eight o'clock until one, counting the executive committee meeting. A lot of Sandag important issues are being discussed, including the establishment of a second vice president position, and Mayor Sotelo Solis from National City is the, is in that position now. Also, we had a long discussion about the regional transportation strategy and a lot of work that is planned to be done to develop and cost out that strategy. On this coming Thursday, the Coastal Cities Group of the League is going to meet, and on Friday, we will be meeting with the Coastal Commission in our Sea Level Rise Working Group. So, those are the things that are coming up and that I've been involved in lately. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, everybody. So, on March fourth, I chaired the Shoreline Preservation Committee or Working Group at Sandag. There was a discussion by the city of Oceanside on options for beach protection. I think every city in the county, if not the world, thinks that their only beach is undergoing erosion problems along with their residents, but it was nice to see what other folks are addressing and alternatives they're proposing, not unlike what we're having to face, and Oceanside may even have more severe coastal erosion problems right now. So, that was interesting and a good opportunity to talk about different types of alternatives, and it's nice that we have IB residents chime in and provide comments, et cetera. So, that was really good. Yesterday, I was invited by the Scripps Institution of Oceanography to be part of a panel at the South by Southwest Music and Cultural Arts Festival. It's a global festival in Austin, Texas. Of course, this year, it's virtual, but I was on a panel about rising coastlines with scientists from Scripps, a scientist from the University of Delaware, and the former president of the Republic of Kiribati, Anote Tong, whose island is facing evisceration, and he's recommending that everyone on the island actually leaves and finds another country to live in. So, pretty heavy subject, but I think the big takeaway was the issue of equity and the fact that we need to be helping in addressing cities and countries that need, that have the least resources and need the most help, rather than, obviously, the wealthiest communities like, you know, in other parts of California that have the capacity to deal with these issues on their own by geologic hazard districts as well. So, it was a nice, a nice panel, but also nice to have Scripps highlight to a global audience the work that they're doing in Imperial Beach to actually predict coastal flooding. The coastal flooding sort of prediction work that they're doing is globally important and will be able to say forever, and it'll be linked to Imperial Beach. This will have global implications for this innovative tool that's going to save tens, tens of thousands and potentially hundreds of thousands of lives by making sure that people are aware when coastal flooding will happen. So, that's, that's really exciting stuff, and we're very lucky to have that, a decades-long partnership where the Scripps Institution of Oceanography, actually, it goes back to the nineteen thirties, when Walter Monk was communicating, the godfather of oceanography, was communicating with Dempsey, our own Dempsey Holder, about ocean phenomena in Imperial Beach. So, anyway, and then yesterday, I was on the, it's called the litter abatement, highway litter abatement working group or subcommittee at Sandag, and that's a committee with Caltrans and other stakeholders to try to figure out how to deal with the road warrior-style trash, the awful conditions on our highways. And as you guys know, all our cities and our cities require to pick up trash, and all the trash blow into the, into estuaries and bays. Unfortunately, it seems like Caltrans has gotten away with far too long of having trash everywhere along our highway. We believe that probably Southern California may be the filthiest highway region and region in all of the United States. There's nothing else like it, and Caltrans is good at making excuses along with the CHP and not finding people for literally dumping garbage on the side of the road. If I, if I sound impatient, it's because we've been discussing this with CHP, I mean, with Caltrans for a while, even before the pandemic. They're squarely placing the trash problem on the pandemic, but it's clear that Caltrans has gotten, and State of California have gotten away with basically allowing huge volumes of garbage on our highway that wash into our jurisdictions, like the city of Imperial Beach and city of San Diego, that then we're fined by the Regional Water Board if we don't pick up. So, it's a big problem. Caltrans is making lots of excuses. They say they spend a hundred million dollars a year cleaning up our highways in California, but obviously, they're not doing a good enough job. And yesterday, it was the waste haulers, including our own Edco, that talked about the need for penalties for people that bring their loads, you know, like garbage loads to the garbage dumps, basically, and aren't tarping them, they're not covering them, so the trash is wiping off the highway. Everyone made it clear that they've basically letting people get away with having that trash fly from the highway, including the CHP. So, I think the recommendation was from the waste haulers and other jurisdictions, including Chair Catherine Blakeshire, who's made this her personal sort of like project to really focus on this, that they need to do something about that. But again, I think we all know that the south part of the county may be the filthiest highway region just off Palm Avenue in the entire United States. There's nothing else like it, and we need to really get the word out to our state assembly members and state senators that this, and our governor, that this is unacceptable and that California has turned from the golden state into the garbage state. So, I'm sure you guys, all of us are proud of how good a great job we've done cleaning up IB, but it's clear the State of California no longer values keeping our highways clean. And you can tell that I'm no longer any patient with Caltrans, as do a lot of elected officials in San Diego County. And with that, I will let Assistant City Manager Cortez Martinez announce something about the red tier.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of the community of Imperial Beach, Assistant City Manager Martinez. Good news today, we are moving into the red tier. So, I just thought I took a couple of minutes to inform and update. What does that mean? There are certain capacity and restrictions. As you can see on your screen, retail malls, destination centers, et cetera, can go into a fifty percent capacity. UCMs, aquariums at twenty-five percent capacity, places of worship, twenty-five capacity, and that can be indoor. Restaurants and movie theaters also indoor at twenty-five percent capacity or a hundred people, whichever is less. Wineries, breweries, and distillers, they, it's only outdoor with modifications. Hotels and gyms at ten percent capacity, and indoor gatherings are strongly discouraged and a maximum of three households. We also want to remind the community that we do have an ordinance in effect that any, anyone in the city of Imperial Beach or who visits the city of Imperial Beach must wear a face covering or mask. So, please continue to wear your face covering. This will help us move into the next years. Our vaccination site continues at Mar Vista High School, and the next year has opened. So, with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. And then, City Manager Hall has an announcement about federal funding. I think it's good news.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is City Manager Hall, and I wanted to update you on some potential federal funding. It appears that the city may receive just over five million dollars over a two-year period in federal funding relief for revenue losses and other impacts to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. There are some fairly strict guidelines on how the funding can be used. Staff has been attending some training sessions on the use of the funding, and in the next few weeks, staff will present some additional information to the city council about this unique and exciting opportunity. But we did want to let you know that through the latest America Recovery Act, it looks like that we will be able to receive some funding that will help us here locally. So, again, as we learn more, we will make sure to keep the mayor and city council informed, and we will probably have a lot to update you on at your next meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, that's really great. Thank you, Andy, and that's great news. It's really glad that President Biden was able to work with Congress to get that legislation passed. As you know, the last pandemic relief bill didn't include city support, so we actually didn't get any funding. It had to come down from the county. So, it's very, very welcome and obviously going to help out a lot. So, we look forward to that discussion. And now, we have City Clerk Kelly. Do you have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will begin with members of the public participating in the meeting through Zoom. Members of the public, if you wish to speak on this particular item under public comments, that's the item, please use the raise hand feature on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your phone. Okay, it looks like we have no public speakers, but we do have four public comments that were submitted by email. The first one is from Danielle Richardson, and she says, "The Imperial Beach People's Alliance inquired about the city council's progress in their efforts to change Imperial Beach's current financial and community relationship with the Sheriff's Department. We were informed that the city council reviewed the recommendations from the ad hoc committee and then voted to not take any further actions. I would like an explanation, I'm sorry, explanation as to who voted to end this progress. I would also like you to explain how this relates to the commitment you made earlier this year in support of the Black Lives Matter movement against police brutality. I am aware of the fact that the Sheriff's Department drafted their own contract with the Imperial, with Imperial Beach and enacted it without the input or consent of anyone from the city. Will we let the Sheriff's Department continue to take advantage of us like this? If you are not willing to pull out of this contract or renegotiate it, what are you willing to do to support black lives? Thank you, Dandy Richardson." The next message is from Indigo Curtis, and she says, "Greetings, IB city council members. I call on our city council to reinstate the law enforcement ad hoc committee as the consultants recommended, and I volunteer to dedicate my time to being part of it. I have personally witnessed and recorded unprofessional and unlawful behavior by the local sheriffs. Unfortunately, the more I observe them, the more hostile and suspicious they behave. I challenge any community member to the same experiment. This is a red flag that cannot be swept under the rug. Last summer, our city proclaimed that Black Lives Matter. We signed a joint statement calling for solidarity with Black Lives and a need for policing reform. There is extensive evidence that our criminal justice system is racist at its core. This point is proven further as federal law enforcement continue to uncover links between police, military, and law enforcement agencies and our nation's greatest threat, white supremacist terrorist groups. The result of last year's law enforcement ad hoc committee was a recommendation to continue the ad hoc committee and that the community continue to have a constructive and open dialogue with the Sheriff's Department. We have never had that open dialogue. Instead, we have learned that our city had no representation in the creation of the Sheriff's Contract and the Sheriff's Department either unwillingly, unwilling or unable to produce receipts for our tax dollars. Thank you for your time and dedication, Indigo Curtis." The third message is from Charlotte West, and she says, "Hello, I am a resident of Imperial Beach who spent hours last summer participating in the ad hoc committee Zoom meetings to address the Sheriff Department use of force policies and budget. I was filled with hope from the dialogue, and we have read the recommendations of the final report. I am writing to ask for an update on these recommendations, especially the first, which would allow the ad hoc committee to stay in place. As you note in your report, this is an important issue which needs to be discussed on an ongoing basis, and I am disappointed in the lack of follow-through since the events of the summer. Thank you, Charlotte West." And actually, I have two more comments. The next one is from Marco Amaral. "My name is Marco Amaral, and last night, my partner and I were victims of a hate crime. I have had almost twenty-four hours to sit on what happened last night at approximately seven PM on the pier. I am coming from a place of love, radical love. At about halfway down the pier, there was a white man, maskless, with what I assumed to be his family, his partner, and two little school-age girls. As I walked past him, about four feet from him, I noticed that he is showing off his brand-new knife, which he uses. He told his girls to kill beaners with, quote, 'to kill beaners with,' end quote, with a big sincere and honored smile on his face. It was what seemed to feel like the longest second and a half of my life. Do I say something? If I do, how? What can happen to my partner? What can happen to me? What about those two little girls? All those thoughts and more rush through my mind. I had to say something, and I had to be true to myself. I told him, quote, 'You shouldn't be teaching hate to them. I am the, quote, beaner, end quote. You are teaching them it's okay to kill,' end quote. You could visibly see the switch in his eyes come on. He really did want to, quote, 'kill a beaner,' end quote. He rushed at me and was then pulled back by his partner. This action of his was repeated twice more. Of course, his hateful attempt to rush me with a knife was accompanied by several pejoratives and classic, quote, 'go back to Mexico,' end quote. What was ensued in the almost twenty-four hours since is not just several thoughts, but the very real feeling of discomfort in this town I love so much. A discomfort that at some level, I and many more people of color have felt for many years already, but now this discomfort is on a new level for me. I recently proposed to the love of my life. After last night, for the very first real time in my life, I have contemplated buying a firearm. This event, a ramification of a culture of white supremacy, took a piece of my peace away. Yes, Imperial Beach has a history of racism, but so does the whole country. So, let's do something about it. I propose the following. One, write a city resolution in support of the State of California adopting ethnic studies at AK through twelve requirement. Within that same resolution, encourage the implementation of an ethnic studies program within Sweetwater Union High School District and South Bay Union High School District. What happened to my partner and I is important, but our focus should be on those kids. Those two girls are two victims of this moment. There are many other families like that one. We need ethnic studies in our schools. Number two, an Imperial Beach Truth and Reconciliation Committee that will be tasked with the following. A, creation of a qualitative and quantitative study that centers the voices, stories, and perspectives of Imperial. Mr. Mayor, that is the three minutes. The rest of the message will be placed in file, on file. And the last written message is from Dante Pamantuan, and he says, "Congratulations to Imperial Beach. We are now in the lower tier of red. Please remove all mask-up signs within Imperial Beach and replace with United States patriotic theme signs welcoming visitors back to Imperial Beach. Question one, is there a record of the mayor and city council?" Question one, is there a record of the mayor and city council members taking the oath of elected officials? And defending the US Constitution from all enemy foreign and domestic? And question two, what is the current stipend for mayor and city council members? Thank you. And then, uh, Mr. Mayor, it looks like we have one raised hand. Is it okay to um, switch over to public comments? Um, and that.
I'm sorry, sure.
Okay, thank you. And it is Mr. Eric Seiverson. Please unmute yourself and begin. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Eric Seiverson, Imperial Beach native, um, current resident of San Diego County. It was with great sadness, uh. That Bill Captain Bill Zidbeck passed away from the city of Imperial Beach and and America this last weekend. An absolute pillar of the community. A staunch supporter of Imperial Beach and the youth of Imperial Beach. An avid defender of the mayor, of affordable housing. And of everything Imperial Beach. Originator, founder of Kids in Castles. And one of the greatest Americans. I just wanted to be noted that Bill will be missed, and I hope that we can all work as we think about a recreation department tonight. To assist the youth in this city. As Captain Bill Zidbeck has always assisted the youth. I've witnessed it with my own eyes for 25 years. And he was assisting the youth last week. Organizing with the optimists. Before his death this weekend, and I hope everyone who's listening tonight will just take a moment. And think about what impact they could have. How can they be like Bill? Beyond that, the comments about the safety. And the law enforcement of Imperial Beach, I ask all of you today to call up. The San Diego Sheriff's Department today and ask them what they had to deal with on Palm Avenue. Ask the city of employees working between fourth and fifth. The absolutely insane individual who was yelling and screaming about slashing people today. Ask them. Ask them how they successfully. Dealt with that person without harming him seven blocks away from where this originated. Please ask them and then ask yourself if you're safe in this town. Honestly, thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Mayor, that is the final public comment.
Great, thank you so much. Now the public comment period is now closed. I'm sorry, yeah, the public comment period is now closed. Uh, I just make sure there's no other comments. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. There's no other comments.
Great, thank you. And now we have consent counter items one through five. See, Manager Hall, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Manager Hall. During briefings, uh, there was a request to remove item number three from the consent counter and place it at the end of the agenda. Just for consistency sake. So if I could get that motion from this from the city council. Um, other than that, there were no comments um, from the briefings of city council.
Is there a motion to pull consent counter item number three for discussion at the end of the agenda?
I'll I'll move it, but I'd like the city manager to uh. Repeat what the item is. What is what is the title of the item?
It's I can read it. It's Resolution 2021 dash 16 authorizing professional services contract with the Nexus Planning and Research. For consultant support for the base show bikeway resilience project.
I make that motion to um, move it to the regular calendar from consent.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
City Clerk Kelly, can you please uh, do the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Fisher, to take item number um, three from the consent calendar for discussion at the end of the agenda. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Leyba Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyba Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
And Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, um, City Clerk Kelly, is there any are there any public comments on uh, consent calendar?
Um. Mr. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands. Um, however, there a a comment came in and it may relate to environmental awareness. Um, may I read that? It's just one sentence.
Sure.
And it says, I request that a representative of the city work with the American Legion VFW Fleet Reserve to assist. Homeless, oh, I'm sorry, this is not um, part of it.
Okay, great. Well, one, is there a. A motion to approve consent counter items number one, two, four, and five?
Mr. Mayor, this is this is uh, Mayor Protem Spriggs. I I so move, but I. I didn't know that our beloved Captain Zedbeck had passed this weekend. And I I really think because he was such a pillar of the community that. I would ask that you ask for a moment of silence uh, out of respect uh, for uh. Captain Bill.
Sure, why don't we do the vote first and then we can do that?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Are you a second?
Great, City Clerk Kelly, can you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Agiri. To approve consent calendar item numbers one, two, four, and five. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Leyba Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyba Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, and so before the next public hearing, um, we'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of retired Navy Captain William Zedbeck, who passed away this weekend. Bill was a. Amazing, uh, an inspiring person, uh, patriotic American and very involved in Imperial Beach and civic. Engagement and a wonderful friend to me and my family. So uh, he will be missed and we send our condolences to him. This family and all, of course, his close friends and colleagues in Imperial Beach and around the world. So uh, with that, can we have a moment of silence, please? Great, thank you so much, everyone, and uh, thanks for reminding us. Our Mayor Protem Spriggs. And now I'd like to open public hearing, uh, item number one. Dash two, which is Seacoast Enterprises LLC consideration of regular coastal permit design review case site review plan. Tentative track Mac and categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guideline section 15332 class 32. For the construction of a new mixed use development with six residential condominiums and approximately 2,140 square feet of commercial space at 801 Seacoast Drive. I'm hitting the gravel on the sounding block and declaring the public hearing open. Associate Planner Openshaw will give the report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Tonight I'll be presenting a master file 1380 for Seacoast Enterprises LLC. Next slide, please. The project is proposing the construction of a new mixed use development with approximately 2,140 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor and. Six residential condominium units at 81 Seacoast Drive. Next slide, please. Project is located in the commercial mixed use two Seacoast Commercial Mixed Use Zone. Uh, the existing parcel is 14,309 square feet. The project would consolidate the three existing lots into a singular lot. And while nine units are allowed with underlying density, um, and 11 units could be allowed. Um, if you get a conditional use permit, the applicant is proposing to have six units. Next slide, please. Here is an aerial view of the site. Uh, the adjacent streets are Daisy Avenue and Seacoast Drive. Next slide, please. Here is an image of the existing site. Next slide, please. Here are images of properties to the east, which are primarily multifamily residential. Uh, next slide, please. Here's an image of the properties to the west, which is the Pier South Hotel. Next slide, please. Here's the images of properties to the north, which is primarily the Sand Castle Inn and Suites. And then if you move further east, then you'll see some residential. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the property to the south, which is a vacant lot. Uh, next slide, please. And here's an image of the alley south of the property. This is where all vehicle ingress and egress would occur for the project. Next slide, please. Uh, here's the site plan. The project is promoting or proposing to have a vertical mixed use structure fronting Seacoast Drive. The ground floor commercial is 2,140 square feet and will provide pedestrian access off of Seacoast Drive. There is an open 800 square foot patio fronting that area to promote pedestrian access. And then above that, there's two residential condominium units, each with a roof deck. Uh, then moving further east, you'll see that there's uh, four residential units and two detached duplex configurations. Uh, the project provides sort of additional step backs, sort of transitioning into that neighborhood when you move east, and there's open space fronting each of those units. The project overall is proposing to have 11 parking spaces, which is in conformance with the code. They could have. Proposed to have a 25% reduction in their parking, however, they intended on meeting the code. Uh, so all of that vehicle ingress and egress would be off of the alley. Um, the duplex units have an attached two car garage. And then there's an open parking spaces further to the east, two of them, which would serve the two units in the mixed use project and an ADA space. Provided for the commercial unit. Uh, next slide, please. So here's an image of the second floor plan. Next slide, please. These are images of the roof decks. The vertical mixed use structures have 820 square foot roof decks and the duplexes have 650 square foot roof decks. Next slide, please. There's a site section plan. It's to illustrate that the project is proposing to have an interior floor to ceiling height for the commercial space of 15 feet. And the building depth is 30 feet. Next slide, please. Uh, so the project's proposing to have 23% of the landscaping be proposed. The requirement is 15%. It is a mixture of permeable pavers, decomposed granite with concrete pavers, and then 1,539 square feet would be planted areas. Uh, so there's drought tolerant trees, shrubs and ground cover located throughout the property. Um, it should be noted that the permeable pavers, when we're counting it towards that overall landscaping, does not include those drive aisles adjacent to those garages. So it's only really focusing on the areas that are related to the usable open space for the project. Uh, there's bio retention basins four along Daisy Avenue, one along the. Southwestern corner of Seacoast Drive. Um, and then there's a total of 10 medium trees that would locate throughout the site and then shrubs. Along the eastern property line that were five feet tall that would provide additional screening for the adjacent residential use uses. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Uh, here's the landscape materials board. There's a range of different plants, uh, fruitless olive tree, willopitusborum. Uh, there's a dwarf bottle brush and safari sunshine. I'm happy to go over that later if there's any questions. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, here's the north elevation. This is the view from Daisy Avenue. The vertical mixed use. Building that's fronting Seacoast Drive is proposing a total height of 29 and a half feet. That's including the three and a half foot tall parapet. And the duplex units each have a height of 26 and a half feet, also including the three and a half foot parapet. And next slide, please. Here is the west elevation, which is the view from Seacoast Drive. Uh, it should be noted that the the uh, commercial building is using. Bronze sort of uh, garage doors. These would have a see-through clear glass to be able to be able to see into the commercial buildings. And next slide, please. Uh, this is a view of the south elevation. This is the view from the alley. Unlike the uh, commercial structures, while the residential. Units also utilize the glass aesthetic for the uh, garages. These these would be frosted glass, so there is actually privacy provided to the occupants. It should be noted that uh, the trash enclosure is accessible and picked up off of the alley side. And that the developer decided to incorporate uh, the primary building sort of building material to enclose this area. So that way it dissuades anybody from doing any sort of illegal dumping, and it looks like a building aesthetic versus a waste area. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, here's the east elevation. This is facing the multifamily residential. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the east elevation of the vertical mixed use structure. So uh, it's showing essentially the backside. There's a staircase that would lead to a lobby to access the units in the mixed use structure. So that's this view. Next slide, please. Uh, this is an image of the west elevation of the duplex that's adjacent to residential. So um, it's just giving an interior look into what the buildings would look like in between each of the duplexes. Next slide, please. Yeah, here are some of the materials. It's a mix of cement siding as well as. Mahabra crystal white stucco and blue stucco. And then there's uh, sunshades and composite windows that are black. Next slide, please. This is an image of the south elevation, the view from the alley. It's to show you what the finished look with the trash enclosures would be. Um, which is built into the vertical mixed use structure as mentioned before. Next slide, please. Here's a project rendering from Seacoast Drive. Next slide, please. This is a project rendering looking at the project from Daisy Avenue. Next slide, please. Here is an image, uh, the project rendering looking um, at the project from Daisy Avenue, looking west. Next slide, please. And here's a project rendering looking at the site from the corner of Seacoast Drive in Daisy. Next slide, please. The project was reviewed December 17th by the Design Review Board, and they provided recommendations for the project which have been incorporated into the plans as well as. Provided as conditions of approval within the Resolution 2021 dash 19. Next slide, please. So the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2021 dash 19 approving the project. Uh, it could also be approved with modifications requested by council. Uh, the project could be disapproved, or it could be continued to a future public hearing. Uh, to allow staff to provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you so much uh, for that. Um. City Clerk Kelly, do we have any public comments before we open up to council questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I will um. Go to the oral comments, and it looks like we have one raised hand, and it's Paul Lasso.
Wait, just um, just one, do we, I know a lot of times we'll have the project applicant that wants to speak. Is that is that this case or or not? Are they present? City Clerk Kelly, is that?
I would defer to um, Associate Planner Openshaw. I believe the applicant is.
You don't have to say anything. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anybody, um, if they wanted to speak, but it's fine. We can move on.
Yeah, the applicant representative's uh, representative is here tonight. Uh, Christopher, if you want to make a comment, this is your moment. Um, if not, uh, we can move forward.
Uh, no, thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks. I just want to make sure you had that opportunity. Um, so yeah, can we get um, the public comment, please, City Clerk Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Lasso, you have three minutes. Please uh, introduce yourself and begin.
Thank you very much. Um, so yes, my name is Paul Lasso, and I just want to say that I'm concerned about the relationship that this project has with gentrification. And the availability of affordable housing.
So I'm sorry, are you an Imperial Beach resident? Maybe you just let us know that.
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so I say this as somebody, you know, I I did move to IB and I moved here from major cities on both coasts I've lived that saw gentrification projects. Uh, priced local residents out of their own hometowns. Um, and it should go without saying that those hardest hit were people of color and uh, that those who benefited the most were white. Um, these new condos that are being built sound super expensive. You know, each one has a two car garage and they get a private roof deck. And it sounds like they'd be out of the price range of most Ibisians. Um, and I'm not sure if these are going to go for buying or for renting, but as you guys all know, uh, most of us are renters anyway. We wouldn't be able to buy these units. They'd be definitely way out of our price range. So if these units are for sale, they'd most likely go for the, you know, uh, fewer, wealthier residents, and that's fine. That's how markets work. Um, I'm also concerned about them being bought up by outside investors who are more interested in profit about the than about the conditions of working class residents. You know, because that's how markets work in a capitalist system. It's about profits, not people. Um, and if these condos do become rental properties in the future, if those purchasers decide to rent them out, uh, they would. Not only be higher than the average rental price that's currently available, but these units would also be exempt from rent control. The landlord will be able to raise rents as well at at will, excuse me, and without restriction. And you can see how that would impact working class residents from accessing new housing in the future. And more concerning is that after reading the summary of the project, I found no mention or concern for affordability. Even though there's been lots of, you know, discussion about the aesthetics of the project that we just heard, you know, it looks very lovely, I'll say that much. Um, and this seems like a lost opportunity to include low income housing in the conversation, just to make sure that these plans ensure that Ibisians of all income levels have the opportunity to live here and live near the beach. And I have two questions for everybody, really. Um, because the issue of affordable housing doesn't just apply to to locals who are looking to buy, maybe stop renting and and get a piece of property of their own. But it also affects the children who are growing up here who want to make sure that they can stay in their own hometown. Again, I'm saying this is somebody who who was pushed out um, of where I grew up and and. is somebody who was pushed out of where I grew up, and it does suck. It's not, it's not great. But as city council members and as the mayor, what are your opinions on the need to create affordable housing here in IB that matches what local residents can afford? Because if they can't afford the housing that's available, then they'll either be pushed out to different areas, or they'll end up homeless, which is especially relevant, given Councilmember Fisher's comments about homelessness earlier today. You know, affordable housing, the lack of affordable housing and homelessness are really two sides of the same coin. So this seems like it would be a great opportunity to address that. And my second question is how your vote on this project would reflect on your opinions on the need to create affordable housing projects for the people who live here. Thank you.
Mr. Lasso, your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other raised hands at the moment, but I do have written comments.
Please go ahead. And thank you, Mr. Lasso.
The first comment is from Sandra, Sandy Brillhart, and she says, "I support this project and respectfully request council to approve it." With the conditions... Oh, I'm sorry. I need to go look hers up. It got cut off when I printed it out, but I will go back to her comment in a moment. The next comment is from Brian Brillhart, and he says, "I am totally in approval for the redevelopment of 801 Seacoast Drive by Seacoast Enterprises."
Secretary Kelly, just because this is virtual, let's make sure we just, we don't have to give people's address, but definitely let's make sure we just let the council know if these are IB residents, if that's included in the correspondence or not. I think that's important.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Brillhart is a resident of Imperial Beach. The next message is from Paul Meshler, and he is a resident, I believe. And he says, "As a long-term owner, oh, he's an owner, "as a long-term owner of residential rentals in Imperial Beach, I am heartened to see a project of this caliber coming to the city. Approval and development of projects like this reinvigorates owners of vintage structures like ours to continue pursuing upgrades." The next message is from Resident Michael Carey, and he says, "To mayor and council members, I am writing in support of the proposed project at 801 Seacoast. Among the features that I like are the number of units, six, which is less than the 11 that could have been built, and the proposed height, which is lower than what could have been built. I would have liked the shape of the buildings to be less boxy and perhaps for the project to be more colorful, colorful, but I do support it. Thanks, Michael." The next message is from Ruth Cole, and she is a resident, and she says, "Below, please find the input I sent to the Design Review Committee regarding 801 Seacoast Drive on 12/17/20. There is much that is positive about this design. It doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to obstruct few corridors, although that's a little hard to see since there are no designations as to south elevation, north, etc. Also, it has front green areas and a good commercial area without overweening height. I believe they've added a blue panel to make the coloring not quite so depressingly gray. However, do we see, I'm sorry, however, do we as a city want all of the new buildings to be as square and unimaginative in design as this? The actual face of the city is beach, as well as Palm Avenue, but particularly Seacoast Drive. Do we as a city feel that gray squares, like lines of cereal boxes, create the beachfront we are trying to create? Where is the character of the ocean? Can that be reflected in design? Are we looking to create bajas by the beach? Or perhaps we can ask for a design that isn't just functional square boxes, but expresses the flow of a family-friendly city by the ocean?" And then she continues to say, "On December 17, the project looks well thought out. However, the design is industrial, depressingly gray, squared off, and boxy, reminiscent of East Germany 1959. Addition of attractive coloring and some more flow to the outline of the structure would make it an appropriate and interesting addition to Seacoast Drive." The next message is from Josie Hamada, an IB resident, and she says, "Mr. Hall, this project has been in the makings for several years, and now that it seems to be coming to be developed, that when building begins, to please be considered of traffic on Seacoast Drive. I support the project." And the next message is from Bob Miller, a resident of Imperial Beach, and he says, "Good evening, Mayor Serge Dadena and council members. I am in favor of the proposed mixed-use project at 801 Seacoast Drive. The clean lines blend in well to the surrounding properties and provide an attractive complement to the Pier South Hotel. Please vote to approve this project. Sincerely, Robert E. Miller." And then again, going back to Sandra Brillhart's message, who is a resident, she says, "I support this project and respectfully request council to approve it. With the conditions stipulated by the DRB, I believe that the project would enhance Seacoast Drive and the surrounding residential neighborhood by providing attractive housing and dining options. The project is sensitive to the context of the neighborhood, as evidenced by its use of setbacks, provision of parking, and incorporation of pedestrian walkways and open space." And Mr. Mayor, that is the final written comment, and I do not see any raised hands.
Great. Thanks, everyone, for your comments. We appreciate all that. In-person comment, and then the written comments. And I'm going to start with Councilmember Spriggs, because I know he would have had his finger on the button to press the public comment, I mean, his comment, before anyone, anyway. So Councilmember Spriggs, do you want to go first?
Oh, we've been working together too long, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to compliment the presentation. I think it was very well done. So thank you, Megan, for a good presentation. I had a couple of questions and then, and then a comment that relates to some of the long-term, longer-term considerations. The the first question is, what kind of commercial is the sponsor planning to or focusing on for leasing the commercial space, the 2,100 odd square feet?
Yes, I believe that the applicant's intention is to have that space occupied by a restaurant use.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, that's useful. And if that's the case, could you review the indoor/outdoor, if any, seating arrangements that are likely to be built into the structure to facilitate a restaurant location there? For example, does it have roll-up transparent doors on the outside? Are they planning to put in sidewalk seating? Are they going to want some city right-of-way to do that? You know, those kinds of questions.
Sure. So in terms of the garage roll-up doors, they do propose to have those garage roll-up doors throughout the commercial building. So when it's sort of cold or there are times when they can't keep that open, they will be clear glass, so you'll be able to see into that area. The entire open patio area that's fronting, basically the commercial structure, is intended to be utilized by seating. So they have like a 36-inch tall clear glass guardrail that surrounds that commercial area, and then there will be dining tables sort of set in there. And then there's also additional space within the actual 2,140 square foot commercial area for the new tenant to basically determine where they want to place dining tables in a way that would best benefit their business, essentially.
I see. So they're not asking for sidewalk right-of-way for placement of seating, that sort of thing?
Correct. At this point in time, they've already accommodated, providing essentially that open patio seating within their property lines.
Okay. Have they made any, do they have, and I know this isn't typically what we ask for, but do they have a strategy for securing a quality restaurateur for that space and for keeping it occupied? Because the last thing we would need in that location would be a long-running vacancy to get it occupied, or a failure of an initial, I don't want to use the term pejoratively, fly-by-night restaurateur, and then it's vacant again.
Very good. Now, that's a valid concern, and it's something that should be addressed with the applicant. At this time, we haven't thoroughly discussed what the proposed business plan is. I can say that I've spoken to the applicant historically, and I've seen different restaurants brought up in terms of what's been secured there. I'm not entirely sure. I don't know if Christopher might have any additional information on that.
Sure, yeah. The, probably the best-case scenario, the owner is a developer, also a restaurateur, so he's going to be, he's going to be owning and operating the space himself. He has some other restaurants, but this is going to be kind of his main, his main restaurant, and he'll be, like I said, just running it himself.
Okay, that's useful. That's good to know. Thank you. And finally, and this leads into my comment, 13 parking spaces, two for each of the, two, four, six, six units, and one handicap space for the restaurant. Is that right?
No, so there's 11 units proposed. So that's, there's the two-car garages for each of the duplex units. Unit one and unit two have an open parking space. Those are both located sort of easterly of the first duplex unit and further east for the other duplex unit. And then there's the 1 ADA accessible space for the commercial structure.
So the the units, the units above the commercial space have two each or one each?
They each have one parking space.
One each? Is that, is that consistent with the the two spaces per unit in this zoning? I thought that's what was required.
Yeah, so what the zoning requires is for six, basically, it requires one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit in this zone. And then additionally, for commercial spaces, it's one per 1,000 gross square feet of commercial. So when you do the calculations, essentially, that means that purely for residential units, you need nine parking spaces, and then for commercial, you need two parking spaces, considering that there would, the applicant wanted to provide those two-car garages for the duplex units. They allocated those additional open parking spaces to the residential units on top of the vertical mixed-use structure, and wanted to create that ADA accessible space. And then, I forgot to mention this earlier, so I apologize, but the applicant is also providing a transportation demand management. So they're providing some bicycle parking spaces, and they also intend on hosting some bus schedules and information.
Okay. Well, here's my concern and my comment. Parking is becoming increasingly a problem all over Imperial Beach. This is one of the top concerns most of us on the council get from residents in the neighborhoods. And it doesn't matter whether they're residents in an apartment building or residents in a single-family home. Parking is getting increasingly tough, and we, we see these two units on the top only with one parking spot each, and that's just not really realistic in this day and age. My concern is that we are, as we develop Seacoast Drive, and we continue not to have alternative parking for beachgoers and businesses, because we've also got the staff and the clients of the restaurant that are going to be looking for parking. And it's not just this facility, but it's every single restaurant on Seacoast Drive has, the parking for staff and customers is not all on the premises. In fact, it may not, there may not be any on the premises. We reach a point in time where, as Seacoast Drive develops with this kind of development, and no additional planned parking someplace, where it's all a zero-sum game in terms of parking supply and an increasing demand, this is going to make it harder on the residents, harder on beachgoers, which we rely on as a visitor-serving community. And, and this is the key point we don't think about, harder on each of the businesses in the Seacoast commercial zone, because they're all going to suffer when people don't have access. And this should be a concern to us as a city, because these are part of the vitality of our community, these businesses, and they're also a source of sales tax revenue. And we, as a council, need to be concerned about whether they're going to get choked off because of the parking constraint, which is present right now, and a lot of people are complaining because of the popularity of the Hess business, for example, which is a credit to the Hess business, but there ain't no parking on the Hess property. So everybody's got to park somewhere else. And, and many of us hear about that concern. So, and I'm not, this isn't about Hess. This isn't about any one of the businesses. This isn't even about this project, which meets code, as you described, but it's about a bigger problem involving other businesses, the neighborhoods, and our visitors, just who want to go to the beach. And I believe we need to have a thorough parking analysis in Imperial Beach that would justify a conversation with the port and others about creating additional parking for this visitor-serving community, and this particular part of our community that is growing in popularity and is going to eventually become a real problem with respect to people getting to the restaurants and the businesses and the beach, and the beach. So I say that to my colleagues, I like this project, but, and I'm not opposing the project on the basis of parking, but I'm just highlighting that we can't keep going this way without increasing consequences, including, including consequences on the other businesses in the, in the community and in this part of the community. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spriggs. Just to make sure that our colleagues in the council understand, again, this is, we're reviewing a project application. So anyway, just to make sure we're clear on that. Mr. Fisher, Councilmember Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to say, what a great-looking project. You know, it's a huge upgrade from what has been there for my entire lifetime. And, you know, I hear Mr. Lasso's concerns about gentrification, but that was a building that had seen its time and served its purpose. I'm grateful for the owner of that piece of land to put in a great-looking project, who didn't maximize every allotment that he was given, every code. He built in his own outdoor dining area for his restaurant, and his, his showing of restraint is greatly appreciated, especially down in the Seacoast area. One thing I did want to mention, and I'm surprised Mayor Spriggs didn't speak about it, was lighting. I don't see in that picture right there, Megan, any type of lighting on that corner, and it's actually a pretty dark corner to begin with. And I know that the radiant lighting from, from the business will be nice, but I think until it gets open, it might be a concern at some point. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to be that drum too loud, because I'm very happy with the project. You know, I don't have much architecture background, but I'm just grateful. It looks nice, beautiful part of the city that's going to be improved. So, great to have it here.
Thanks. Well, Planner Open Shaw, do you want to just make sure we address the issue of lighting? So maybe we can just clarify that?
Actually, I can just show you a quick photo. Tyler, if you don't mind going back to the site plan, I could just show you a little bit about where the proposed lighting is for the project. Perfect. Sorry, it's like a little bit far away. But so, on specifically that corner, the project does propose basically lining. So you'll see there's lighting fixtures on the corner, and then going down Daisy Avenue, fronting the residential structures and on portions of the commercial building as well. But of course, generally, what's included as a condition of approval is to look at the lighting, or just in general, we try and conform with the code in terms of ensuring that there's proper lighting and proper lighting plan approved as part of the project. So that's a good point. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate that.
No, thank you for that update. Yeah, that is nice. Councilmember Labor Gonzalez?
Good evening. Mr. Lasso, thank you very much for your comments. My question and my concern are for the two existing businesses that are currently occupying that space, Doggo's Gus and Seacoast Pizza. Seacoast Pizza, it's been there, and it's a mom-son operation. Seacoast Pizza, it's been there, uh, and it's a, um, a mom-son operation for close to twenty years. Um, I'm just concerned, due to COVID, over the past year, those two businesses have been able to endure and stay open through this pandemic. Um, I'm all about developing. It looks like a great project, um, very appealing to the eye. Um, I'm just concerned about those two businesses. What's gonna happen to them? Are we looking at possibly, you know, finding a location for them? Apparently, there's, there's nothing open, particularly on Seacoast. Um, that's my concern, please, for the two, uh, businesses that are, that are occupying the space now. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just a point of clarification, um, Mr. Mayor, you said we're, we're not gonna vote on approving the project tonight, or we're just reviewing it, and then a subsequent meeting, we will approve it? You said we're just reviewing it. I thought we were approving the, or deciding on approving or not, or making-
We are. Yeah, we're, we're approving it.
Okay, just, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, well, first and foremost, I just wanna thank, uh, staff for all of their work on this. Uh, also to our designer review board members for volunteering their time and making some very, uh, good recommendations, especially the ones relating to native plants and the, uh, trash and captures. I, I think those were really great. Um, I am fully aware of our commitment to RENA and our, our, our new numbers that we need to increase to provide housing within our city that were already incredibly challenging to meet. Uh, so I know that the, that this project will provide, um, additional units. Uh, with that being said, um, I do wanna echo what Mr. Lasso mentioned regarding, um, I didn't see anything, uh, relating to, uh, low-income housing units on this project. And to be completely honest, uh, other than COVID and water quality, the other thing that keeps me up at night and is extremely concerning is this issue of our housing crisis. Um, we are, and I, and I know I talk about it at every council meeting, but I will continue to do so. We are seventy percent renters in Imperial Beach. There's so many people, uh, facing eviction right now, especially because of COVID. Um, so I do, I do also worry about gentrification. Uh, that being said, uh, this is not city-owned property. This is a public, uh, you know, a private, uh, privately, uh, owned and private, uh, owned property, right? So we can only make, uh, motions or recommendations or approvals on the project design and, 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 and whatnot. So with that being said, I would like to ask a question of Mr. Sawaya. I hope I'm not mispronouncing your name, but the representative of the, of the developer that's present here tonight, because I would like to make a request. Is he still on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I would like to ask, uh, of you and, and, and the developer, um, we very rightfully said, uh, by Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, uh, I'm concerned about parking, I'm concerned about, um, you know, uh, congestion, especially in an area that's highly visited. Uh, one of the only free recreational opportunities that we have for, for our local, um, residents. So, um, being that I am a member of the MTS, uh, Board, Public Transit, uh, I would like to see if you guys would be willing to commit to encouraging and promoting the use of public transit by funding a bench and a, um, sun cover of the bus stop that's literally right across the street from your project, uh, half a block up in front of the Sandcastle Inn. Do you think that would be something that you can commit to?
Um, yeah, it's certainly something like to consider, something that the owner cares about too, obviously. Um, I, I'm the architect, I'm representing the owner, but I'm, I wouldn't be able to make that decision for him. Um, that could be something that's suggested, something that he can consider, something that we can kind of, um, I don't know, put, put together, put, um, some suggestions down, and we can, we can bring it to him.
But we're approving the project tonight, correct?
I'm sorry, were you asking, Councilmember Agiri, are you asking Mr. Sawaya a question? Are you asking, who are you asking the question to?
Yes, I'm asking him because, uh, we are approving the project tonight. Well, we're deciding on the approval of the project tonight. And I know, uh, he just mentioned he'd like to make the recommendation to, uh, the developer. But I think putting a, a, a bench and a sun cover isn't that much to ask for our community. Um, so hopefully, that could be the case, and you can commit to that tonight.
Yeah, I think Mr. Sawaya indicated that he's not the developer himself, so I definitely think we can, we can put that recommendation in.
Great.
I'm gonna make sure that city manager or our city attorney to make sure that's, that's something we can do. Um.
Mayor and Council, this is Manager Hall. So the, I think the request is, um, whether or not the bus stop that is located, I believe, in front of the Sandcastle Inn could be enhanced to be more user-friendly. Um, that is not a requirement of our code. I believe that, um, the, Councilwoman Agiri is asking whether or not the applicant would voluntarily improve that so that it would be more user-friendly for the residents of the new project. But it, it, I would do wanna clarify, it's not a code requirement.
Right, so we're asking that, we would ask, we, we, we're asking the developer to voluntarily do that. Um, right, 'cause it's not required. And we can't require them to do that.
No, that's not, I, I, I understand that, Mr. Mayor, that it's not, um, a requirement, but an ask, right? For our community.
Okay, um, I, I need to ask for a recess right now. Um, I'd like to ask the city, uh, I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess. There's a question I need to ask our city attorney, this independent, so, an issue's come up for me that I need to ask for a recess. Is that okay? Do we need to do a motion for that, or can we just come back to this? How do we do that, city, city?
Ma- Mayor, uh, the appropriate item would be to have a motion to take a five-minute recess, and we can reconvene. Uh, that, that's a, you are correct, to ask for a motion for a five-minute recess.
Make it a motion for a five-minute recess, please.
I'll second, Spriggs.
Oh, thank you, Ray.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. This is Mayor Didina calling the order, the meeting back to order. It's eight twenty, I'm sorry, eight, six twenty-six AM. Um, this is like one of those, uh, cliffhanger, uh, TV shows, Councilmember Agiri. So, when we left the scene, uh, you were asked, we're talking about a bus, uh, a bus stop issues. I think Mr. Sawaya agreed that he would ask the developer. Um, it's my understanding, we can't legally require, um, them to do that, but I'm satisfied that they're, they're gonna ask, it seems like a reasonable request, and they would voluntarily do that. I'm not sure if that satisfies you. The vote, the vote isn't on a bus stop, it's on this project, so I'm gonna make sure that we're legally, um, doing-
I totally understand that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the clarification. Um, you know, uh, I'm not asking for, or requiring that as a condition to approving the project for the record. I was just asking Mr. Sawaya to see if he could commit or ask his, um, client to commit during our council meeting, which has happened in the past. Uh, in reference, it was a MiKS project, uh, we did something similar. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, with that, um, my only comment is kinda like Jack, you know, this has been, been there forever. Um, I'm glad to see, you know, dilapidated buildings, uh, improved. I'd like to see a lot more empty lots, uh, filled in. I, I think that, obviously, as Mr. Lasso sort of, you know, talked about, the contradiction of Imperial Beach is, um, you know, obviously, we need more affordable housing, as does every community in California, if not the United States. It is the single biggest issue that's i- in our state. Um, but we're not gonna get the affordable housing we need at this site. We need the state of California, uh, to do a lot more, to provide subsidies for Imperial Beach and developers to build affordable housing where we can get a lot more leverage along Palm Avenue and other areas, where we can do a little, a lot more density. Um, so, that's the only thing I have, I have to say on, on that issue, and it's not, it's not gonna come from, from this project. Um, but, anyway, um, with that, I just wanna make sure that there are no additional public-
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Fisher made a comment about, um, he thought I was gonna say something about lighting, so I, I just wanted to clarify that, uh, the, the lighting issue, just like the parking issue, is not project-specific. Uh, we can have a hodgepodge of adequate, inadequate, different lighting on each building, but that doesn't, uh, create, uh, an environment that's conducive to, to public safety and to transit, uh, by pedestrians all up and down the street. And we've talked before about the dark spots because of the, uh, twenty-foot-plus vehicle-oriented lighting that we have. So, I, I think, just like parking, we need a comprehensive, uh, approach to look at lighting in this area so that people can walk comfortably throughout that commercial zone. And our residents can have a place to go after dark and just walk with their families in, in safety. Uh, if parking is forcing people to park further away, then lighting is all the more important. So it's something I hope we can come back to. Thanks a lot.
Great, thanks. With no additional public comments and no additional council comments, I'm gonna, I'm hitting the gavel, it's my coffee cup on my ki- kitchen counter and declaring the public hearing closed. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, approving regular coastal permit, designer review case, site plan review, tentative track knock and category exemption pursuant to secret guidelines, uh, for the construction of a new mixed-use development with six residential condominium units and approximately twenty-one hundred forty square feet of commercial space at Eight-O-One Seacoast Drive, which is located in the CMU two, uh, commercial and mixed-use zone. Is there a motion?
Spriggs moves.
I'll second it. Um, City Coach Kelly can take an oral roll call vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Fisher, to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Didina, how do you vote?
Didina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
And, uh, just before we move on, just for the public record, you know, along with everything else, everyone suffered this year. We suffered extensive water damage in our house. That's only happened during the pandemic. So I've got a construction crew, uh, behind me. Those guys are working. It's six-thirty, they're awesome. And so if you hear noise, it's some construction guys fixing up our house after it was damaged. So, anyway, just, we're keeping it real here in IB. On my mind, I'm mind surfing the perfect waves in the photo behind me, uh, in, in the council meeting, but in the reality, I'm, we got construction guys working in the back of our house safely, by the way, with masks on. So, anyway, um, item number two is public hearing to accept public comment on Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen of the City of Imperial Beach, California, adjusting the regional transportation congestion improvement plan fee for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. And I'd like to hit the gavel on the sounding block and declare the public hearing open, and Public Works Director Minichelli will give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. This is Public Works Director Minichelli. Uh, I'll be very brief with this item. It's a procedural item, uh, that we do on a annual basis, providing an inflationary adjustment to the transportation mitigation fee charged for new dwelling units in the city. These fees are used for improvements on SR seventy-five specifically, uh, and lately, we've been using them related to the traffic signal improvements that are, uh, gonna be happening out there. Uh, with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
City Coach Kelly, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands, and there are no written comments.
Great, I'll close the public comment period for now, but again, I think we're trying to keep it a little more loose here because of the pandemic, and this is virtual, so if there are any additional public comments, just let me know. Um, and then we can start, uh, and reverse order this time. Councilmember Agiri, any questions or comments?
None, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor Gonzalez, any questions or comments?
None at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Fisher?
Uh, you know, just one, one comment, uh, you know, doing a brief, I was asked what the money that they, that this stuff is used for, and I always mention that, uh, we could use it for some other signs to get people to the beach, so, uh, but as far as the, the actual, uh, resolution, no, no comments.
Great, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Spriggs?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Mayor. This is, um, this is a periodic item that, um, you know, is, uh, is, is pretty, uh, routine. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, we're definitely keeping it real here. All right, um, I will hit the gavel on the sounding block and declare the public hearing closed, but to make sure there are any additional, uh, public comments. Great, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, approving the increase in the RTC IP mitigation fee charged for each new residential dwelling unit constructed in Imperial Beach in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, from twenty-five hundred eighty-three and eighty-two cents to twenty-six hundred and thirty-five and fifty cents. City Coach Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
Need a motion and a second? Is there a motion?
Spriggs, aye.
Is there a second, please?
Second by Fisher.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Fisher, to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Didina, how do you vote?
Didina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, we have report number, uh, one now, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash fourteen, establishing a time and place for public hearings to consider adoption of a five-year sewer service charge and sewer capacity fee. And Public Works Director Minichelli will introduce the item, followed by a report by Carmen Casner, Regional Managing Director for NV Five. Take it away, Mr. Minichelli.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, in this case, I'm just pleased to introduce Carmen Casner, our contract city engineer. She'll be presenting this report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. I'm Carmen Casner, I'm your contract city engineer. Over the past year, I've worked with staff and Karen Keys of the Keys Group, who completed your last two rate studies to update her model with the current information. Next. Tonight, we ask you to do, counsel to take one of the three actions, adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-One fourteen with a date established, revise that resolution to establish an alternate date, or deny the request to staff to hold the public hearing. Next, let me start with the little background. Last study, the last study was done in twenty sixteen for fiscal years twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. At that time, council did adopt a pass-through ordinance that allowed the city public utility code, and last spring, this ordinance was used to adjust commodity rate portion of the sewer bills, because Metro Troop bills exceeded the estimates included in that last rate study. The city bills are custored annually on the tax roll, and the bills are a combination of a bait rate, base rate that covers a fixed cost and a commodity rate, which is based on the cost of flow elements of the program, which is primarily your treatment costs. Since twenty sixteen, water conservation has caused water use to continue to drop. But unfortunately, due infiltration of groundwater and inflating storm events, the amount of wastewater that is treated has not proportionately dropped. I've got some detailed slides with those elements later. All of our wastewater is treated by the city of San Diego, and therefore, we're members of the Joint Powers Authority, and all of the efforts that San Diego is doing to address the capacity of the Point Loma wastewater treatment plant, which is a port, which is, which is a pure water program, is a part of, causes treatment costs to increase over time. Next, there are three main issues associated with the need for the increase. One, wastewater billing is based upon your water bill, and your water usage is down. The city has very little reserves. The revenue that the city's been receiving over the past five years is less than the rate study had projected because of conservation. The enterprise fund as a whole has been okay, because there's been some pretty good development in the city that has resulted in capacity fees, but reserves have not built up like was projected in the last rate study. Because you bill on the tax roll, your funds are received from the county mainly in January and May. So you need a minimum of six months of reserve to make sure you've got your cash flow to meet the needs of the system. Additionally, you have aging facilities with pump stations requiring repairs, and we're still trying to address infiltration and inflow issues throughout the system. Next, I wanna quickly walk you through the process of developing the rates. It's the same methodology has been done in the past. First, we determine how much revenue is needed by projecting inflation and adding in the latest numbers for treatment and other costs such as PERS. Then those revenue requirements are assigned to the various customer classes based upon the type of wastewater that is produced by those customer classes. And then the rate design assigns those projected needs to the target levels required. Next, for the city, the current rates are not covering your costs, as I said. Last year, even after the pass-through was incorporated, the tax roll was short of revenue requirement by nearly four hundred thousand. So while the pass-through does help, it does not bring rates up to the current needs of the city. Next, this is a graphic where I was mentioning earlier, when compared to fiscal year sixteen, water use is consistently down by eleven to seventeen percent. You used, as a city, nine- You used as a city nine hundred and thirty thousand HCF of water in twenty sixteen. Go on to the next slide, though, you will see that in twenty sixteen, we treated over one million HCF of wastewater. That means the hard fact is that you treat almost twenty five percent more wastewater than water used in the city, and this is due to infiltration inflow. The second part of this is, as you know, this slide, this slide doesn't have the nice reduction as we go up. Well, it's not such a nice thing, but bottom line, your wastewater treatment isn't consistently lower. You have a wet year, you're going to have more wastewater treatment. The city has made some really great efforts to reduce infiltration and inflow in the main lines. But at this point, addressing infiltration of all the laterals, which is where we believe much of it is happening, is a much, much larger task. I will say the one good thing is wastewater treatment, you used to actually treat a higher percentage. About ten years ago, you were treating almost forty percent more wastewater than water used. So you're making progress. Just good. Next. In developing your rates, we do follow industry standards, and we are not recommending any changes to the structure. We are recommending changes to two assumptions and parameters principally. Currently, the city does not build single family customers for more than two hundred hundred cubic feet of water used annually. The assumption has been in the past that those customers are doing more irrigation. With the push for accessory dwelling units throughout the city, properties with ADUs will still be charged a single family customer rate. Therefore, it's appropriate to assume that more water use on a property is not necessarily due to irrigation, additionally with conservation that's been occurring. Secondarily, currently, the city uses a return to sewer percentage for single family customers and public and institutional customers of seventy five percent. This means we take the annual water use and reduce it by seventy five percent and then use that number to calculate the commodity rates. Multi families properties have a return to sewer rate percentage of ninety five percent applied to them because it is assumed they have much lower water irrigation being used, and businesses are set at ninety percent. We are recommending that we make that increase for single family and public and institutional customers from seventy five percent to ninety percent. This is the seventy five percent was set many, many years ago, and it is not reflective of current industry standards given water conservation and changing in landscape and irrigation. Today, most household water use is going into the sewer. And if there are customers that do want to pay for lush landscaping, they can still acquire and install a separate irrigation meter that is not billed on the sewer bill. Next. This slide details the current estimates from the city of San Diego for the cost of treatment of the city's wastewater. One qualifier is to note that city lags by about two years, city San Diego. A reconciliation of the bills that they send with the actual wastewater treated. So in some years, there are projections made where you come in actually lower than the projections, and you get a small rebate from the city of the year, city of San Diego. But recently, we've had some years where there's been an additional bill received act after the actual flows and costs are chewed up. That's what actually happened in twenty twenty one and why its numbers are actually higher than in twenty twenty two. Next. The city, this details the city's expense needs, and most costs are based upon a three percent inflation factor. Capital improvements increased at three percent since twenty sixteen and are just barely keeping up with construction costs. This is that same information in the graphic form. The metro costs are more than half of the city's sewer budgets. So there's not a lot of control you have over that. So next. If we take all those parts and pieces and put them together, we are recommending a three percent increase to base rates and three percent increase to commodity rates for each of the next five years. The city just does not have the significant reserves at the beginning of the fiscal year needed to maintain or to not have a rate increase at this point in time. The city has currently has barely six months of reserve and no reserves for capital improvement and emergency reserves. Most agencies have multiple reserve accounts, which helps level out the worry when water and sewer flow flows fluctuate. Next. This slide has got a lot of lot of numbers on it, but real quickly, this is just basically going through the calculation of the actual impact for the median, single family residential water user. As we increase the return to sewer percentage. So this year, they will see a larger than three percent increase on rates, but in future years, it would be the three percent. So in quick summary, the single family would be paying forty two. They currently pay forty seven dollars and twenty eight cents per month. With an average usage of seventy seven hundred per annually. In the future, they'd be paying fifty four dollars and forty two cents a month. That's basically a seventeen, seven dollars and fourteen cent a month increase over the current bills. Water use does greatly affect their bills, but. Next slide. This just details different water meter sizes and the different rates. Those two would be increased by three percent annually for each of the different meter sizes. The. Next slide. So where does IB fall compared to other jurisdictions? Currently, you have the fourth highest wastewater rates, but you're very, very close with four other agencies. I know those numbers are kind of tiny to see. But the next slide is where we will fall on after the rate increases goes into effect. What I've done here is I've highlighted in yellow the cities with projected rate increases going in place. And we would move up, but at the same point, I do know El Cajon's, while that that is their set rate, they have a pass through. Clause also in their ordinance, and they are going to be addressing a pretty large true up bill that they got from the city of San Diego also this year. So this is where you fall currently, would would fall if you approve these rate increases. Next slide. So the last item I do need to cover is the capacity fee that is charged to developers. It recovers a cost and investment the city has put into the system as a whole. Fees do need to be adjusted over time to reflect replacement costs, and thus it's recommended that the fee be adjusted for inflation that has occurred over the last five years. And that we can, you consider indexing it to inflation so you don't fall further behind in the future. But next slide. In closing, we are recommending a three percent annual increase to your base rates, a three percent increase for commodity rates for each of the next five years, making the two minor adjustments to the rates of removing the cap. And increasing return to sewer percentages, we are going to be recommending you adopt, re-adopt the ordinance with the pass through clause to protect against metro or other utility cost increases. And recommend you adopt the capacity fee. So at this point, we recommend setting the public hearing and notifying the public in conformance of POP two eighteen. Any questions?
Great. Thank you so much for that. Before any council questions or comments, City Hall Kelly, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one raised hand. I believe it's Dante Pametwan. Mr. Pametwan, please admit yourself. You have three minutes and begin.
Hi, thank you for the information. I wanted to ask you regarding the seventy five percent increase. I'm against that increase. Seventy five percent seems to be a lot for single family residents and wanted to let you know that you had said that we were doing a good job here the last ten years, and we were actually using less water. So if you want to raise, there's a recommendation to raise seventy five percent. There should be at least some kind of, what I what I would like to recommend is rainwater capture systems or anything like that to help offset the cost of that. Or if there's grants available from the city from the sewer fun fund for the increase for single family residents needing water and conserving water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there additional questions or comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, there are no further raised hands or written comments.
Great, then I'd like to close the public comment period, and if there's any questions or comments from the council, we can start with Councilmember Labor Gonzalez. Mr. Labor Gonzalez, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Fisher?
Yeah, I know this meeting just is kind of set the date, but I would encourage as if we do set the date tonight, that as we move forward towards that date, that we do bring some ideas how to lower our water usage. It's kind of interesting to see that. Or the wastewater, I should say, our water usage has dropped, but our wastewater has increased. So kind of an interesting thing. So I think getting some explanation, perhaps some ideas of how to be a little bit more efficient. And since it's based on actual usage, there's an opportunity for single family homes to be responsible for their own bill at the end of the month. That'd be great.
Great, thank you. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like the the clarification on the seventy five percent issue. I invite clarification from Carmen on that, and because I think that's important, an important thing to clarify. This is fairly complicated stuff. I serve on the Metro Wastewater Commission, and the way these rates are composed of different components and how the components operate independently and what goes into a rate study and that sort of thing is is not easy to get in one setting. So I also hope that there'll be opportunities for since this impacts every resident of Imperial Beach, for us to collectively learn more about how this works, even though it can be numbers and boring. But the end result is going to be a a more secure wastewater fund and a but also on the other hand, it's going to be residents needing, coming to us and asking us, why did you approve it? So we need to have the ability to explain that. The short answer in terms of what's what's inevitable here is we haven't had sufficient cost recovery to maintain our reserves and to keep up with costs. And we've got to do something because we're with only six months of reserves, that something has to happen. The question is how much is reasonable over what period of time? And it's not about water use. It's about how much waste production and goes into the wastewater system. And I don't know if that is something that is humanly possible to control, other than reducing the city's population and the number of people on the toilet seat every day. So that's, I I I think this is just an inevitable process of population growth. And but I don't know, our expert may have something to say about how we how we manage that. Thank you.
So you wanted the consultant to discuss people's bathroom habits in Imperial Beach, is that right? I want to make sure I'm clear on that.
No, I I I actually wanted her to clarify on the seventy five percent versus, I think it was three point five percent that I saw. And I also wanted her to comment on whether she knows of any methodology to produce, to reduce wastewater production, you know, per capita. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
You want me to speak, answer it now?
Sure.
I think if you can go back to slide fourteen for me, Tyler. And I can, and I was trying to be mindful of everyone's time. So I know I was probably rushing too fast through that. What we're doing is currently when the bill is calculated, we use, everyone gets charged the base rate. So in this case, the current base rate is two hundred and thirty two dollars and forty one cents annually. Then we take and we multiply that times a percentage of the water used by the customer. So if the average customer uses seventy seven hundred cubic feet of water annually, we take seventy five percent because historically, there was a lot of water used on a property for irrigation. So in calculating the bill, you would use the base rate of two hundred and thirty two dollars and forty one cents. You would add to it seventy five percent of the seventy seven hundred cubic feet, and then you multiply that times the commodity rate to get the total annual bill of roughly five hundred and sixty seven dollars or forty.
Just to clarify, irrigation doesn't go into the wastewater system. It goes into the ground. So that's why it's a percent factor. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why we use, we used to use seventy, you know, twenty five percent of the water was theoretically used on a property for irrigation. In this day and age, that isn't the case. There is much less water for most properties being used on irrigation. And thus, the recommendation and the reality is that most people are returning more as much or more water to the wastewater than they used to. So they then it used to be seventy five percent. They probably, they, we believe they're returning more than in the ninety percent range. And when we are treating more wastewater than water produced, the water is coming from someplace. So that means it's coming in through laterals, it's coming in through main lines. So to continue the calculation, it's again, it's not a seventy five percent increase. I apologize if I was too quick on that. The written, the new bill instead would use the new base, which is two hundred and thirty nine dollars and thirty eight cents annually. We would take the seventy seven hundred cubic feet of the median annual user, and we'd multiply that times ninety percent. Again, times the new rate, which is three, that it's gone up by three percent to get the new annual cost of six hundred and fifty three dollars annually or fifty four dollars a month. Does that explain that better?
Mr. Spriggs, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and what what percent, what percent is that? I mean, I could calculate it myself, but you know, you, we've got the fifty fifty four forty two versus the old rate of forty seven twenty eight. That's a pretty significant increase.
It is. It is a fifteen percent increase for this first year versus just three percent. As far as what to do about the wastewater, the city's already been doing a lot to on the main lines of lining lines. And we're doing a process called chemical grouting where we inject a particular chemical that expands and reduces where water can come in on a wastewater pipeline. They use it a lot in Florida. We're doing that on the main lines before we line the lines to help reduce. Because what happens when you line the line, you sometimes have water that just comes out someplace else and you build it with pressure. I think the problem is, is that as we've fixed all these main lines, we still have a lot of laterals and a lot of aging homes. That those laterals are probably leaking a lot themselves, or they're having in groundwater coming into the laterals on a regular basis. It's a little bit, you know, it's always higher that if you saw noticed twenty nineteen when there was more rain that occurred. The wastewater production was much higher because the groundwater was probably higher, and thus more groundwater is getting into the laterals, gets into the laterals, it has to be treated. So the the fix is is very expensive is to do something with all the private laterals across the city.
Great, thank you. Mr. Spriggs, does that answer the question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I I think so. So that fifteen percent increase will be all at once in the first year. And then in subsequent years, are there, what can you say about whether it's going to be flat or how much is the expected increase and over what period of time?
It's just three percent per year for each of the next four years.
Okay, that's that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
Thanks, and I thanks for me. I, you know, I I remember, I think my my first year in the council, we discussed this. I my heart sinks, and I actually almost get physically sick thinking about the how much water we're wasting and how much money we're wasting and how much energy we're wasting treating groundwater, right? We're living in a desert. We have a water shortage, and now we're wasting all these resources and then pumping costs and emissions to pump sewage uphill to be dumped in the ocean because our pipes are leaking. So. You know, I think we have to start asking ourselves, can we afford our water and our sewer system? I think that's a legitimate issue, right? Like, can we afford to continue to do what we do? Are there other options for that? So. But again, we're wasting so much money and so many, the most precious resource of all besides air, and that's water, right? So it drives me absolutely crazy that we're doing that in addition to having to pump sewage uphill to be treated in Point Loma. So anyway, with that.
Mr. Mayor, I haven't gone.
Oh, my God, I am so sorry, Councilmember Gary.
Thank you. Ms. Casner, thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a couple of friendly suggestions for next time you come and present for our for the public hearing. Actually has to do with this slide. I'm glad that it's pulled up. Is there any way that maybe we can visually simplify? Is there any way that maybe we can visually simplify it for folks so that it becomes a little bit easier to digest? And just maybe using layman's terms, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'm certain that all of us on the council understand what commodity means, but maybe not the regular person that lives in A V. So given that it will be a public hearing, that would be my one recommendation. If we could just make it more user friendly to understand so that folks can truly understand what they're getting into and just simplify it that way. So thank you again so much for your time and for doing all this great work.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt amended resolution number twenty-two-one dash fourteen, establishing the date and time for the required public hearings to modify sewer rates as our motion.
Spriggs, I'll move.
Okay, sure. Second.
City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
There's been a, a motion by Spriggs, seconded by Fisher, to approve amended resolution number twenty-two-one dash fourteen. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you. And now we have item number two, report number two, resolution number twenty-two-one dash fifteen, awarding a contract to game time for the installation of playground and fitness equipment as part of the playground improvement Rema Park project, and allocating the required city matching funds. Public Works Director Minichelli will give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Members of Councils, the resolution awarding a contract to game time for the installation of playground and fitness equipment at Rema, and also providing the necessary city match funds pursuant to the, to grants that were awarded on the project. The grants totaled about two hundred thousand dollars. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Just show off, as I stated there, the contract and allocating city matching funds. Go on to the next slide. We have some imagery showing the playground, three pieces. Go on the next slide. Another view of it from, of the equipment from this side. And then I think, go ahead, one more. One more, we'll show the, the fitness equipment. We've also got some adult fitness equipment that'll be on this site, included within this project as well. We're very excited to get started on the project and we need to get it done before summer. So we're ready to move. Go ahead and go to the next slide and we're ready for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Minichelli. Love that stuff. We can start. First, are there any public comments or questions? City Clerk Kelly?
I'm it's, but there is a raised hand. And it's Dante Pamentwan, please, Dante Pamentwan, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Eric, and City Council for getting this project and the grants for this playground. Really excited to see this come to fruition for our kids here in Imperial Beach. So thank you so much.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there additional questions or comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is a written comment from Imperial Beach resident Josie Hamada. And she says regarding resolution twenty-one, twenty-two-one dash fifteen, Rema Park Playground Improvements, I support the project. This will definitely be an added structure for families to enjoy together. Sincerely, Josie Hamada. And that is the final public comment.
Great, thank you so much. And so now we can go to council comments and we can start with Mr. Fisher, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I just want to say what a, what a great improvement that's going to make in Rema Park. I think the information we got is the, that the playground equipment that's there was put in nineteen ninety-four. And so it's, it's, it's well worn and needs a faceless. I do have a couple of questions for Eric. One of the questions I had is, how long is it going to take for installation and when, when do we expect that the installation will start?
It should take, the, the last project we did, Tepal took about, I'd say ninety days for installation. I expected that the planning all along has been for this project to be complete by July first. So we intend to hit that date. I don't think we'll have any problem hitting that schedule.
And I guess one more question, will the entire park be closed during the installation?
That's not likely. I think just the area at the, the actual playground itself and the area that we're going to be building, the, the fitness area will be closed. But there'll still be some grass area left there for folks to, we're not going to fence off the entire park and anything like that.
Well, that's, that's great to hear. I think that, you know, having wonderful outdoor spaces that are at no cost to residents is really a big plus, especially if they look like that. And I like the fact that it's not just slides and swings for the kids, but there's also some adult equipment there. So it's, it's for families completely. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember, Mayor Portem Spriggs?
I also, oops, I also like this project very much. And I think it's great that there's both equipment for kids and adults at the park. So, and I also like the fact that we got a, a nice matching, a nice grant to do this work. That, that's excellent. So congratulations, Mr. Minichelli, for, for all of this, this effort, you and your staff. What I really have a question about is where are you going to get that big lake with the sailboat on it that's going to be the park? And is this sort of the future of sea level rise?
I, I hope not. That's going to be the Zoom background for the park. It's going to be a permanent Zoom background. So we're never, ever will forget the pandemic.
Now I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering the same thing. I was like, whoa, the ocean's going to be risen. Okay. Well, great project. I think that the more equipment that we can bring our kids to play in, the better. I love the ocean theme, the whale there. I think that's really great for our kids. So very supportive of, of the project and very happy that we secured grant funding for it.
Councilmember Labor, Labor Gonzalez?
I have to piggyback the rest of the council like, that's awesome. Just seeing all the new equipment and right in time for summer, everything positive about it. Very excited. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And thanks, Mr. Minichelli, and the public work staff and all the city staff. This is really great stuff. It's the most important stuff. I know we have the next agenda item to talk about the most important stuff. Our kids are our most important assets in this city. Our families are as well. But it's also important to, I think, we're a leader now in, in the county, but it's not the state, it's not the country. And understanding that we need to have exercise equipment for adults and people of all ages in our parks as well. So I love the fact that we're mixing it up and I think we're going to have an opportunity to continue this. But I, I still know that, you know, I have memories in my brain still of wonderful playground equipment I played with that I loved. I think it was Mission Bay Park or somewhere, you know. And so this stuff is really important for kids. And my kids grew up playing in, in every park and I'd be in on the playground equipment nonstop. And so it's really important stuff. And the socialization that occurs is really important stuff around there, the parents talking and everyone hanging out. It's the most important stuff. We need to encourage and continue to keep going. So, Mr. Minichelli, I just want to thank you for your commitment and dedication to this, along with your staff and all of our staff who really get why this is important. And it's really clear that you enjoy doing this and you do it well. So really, really stoked on this. So entertaining motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-one dash fifteen, awarding a public works contract for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight to game time for the installation of new playground and fitness equipment at Rema Park. And the city would do matching funds as required by, per capita proper fifty-eight grand and authorizing the finance director to transfer forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen, fifteen, fifteen to the playground improvement Rema Park project. And City Clerk Kelly will take an, or I'm sorry, is there a motion?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Spriggs, second.
Great. And City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Fisher, seconded by Spriggs, to adopt resolution number twenty-two-one dash fifteen, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two-one dash fifteen. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried.
We, we didn't do all the effusive ayes like we did last time. So I'm not going to do that. But maybe we can save that for the next item. So item number three. And before I, you know, before we go into item three, I just want to thank my city council colleagues, each and every one of you and our city staff and all the residents who have just overwhelmingly weighed in on the need to address this next issue. And that's a city council discussion in direction in relation to the formation of a recreation department. And the city of Imperial Beach provide recreation services for the community. This pandemic has reminded us that this is the most important thing that we can do, the most important thing. We need public health, we need public safety, we need economy, we need infrastructure. But our residents need to interact with each other and engage. And so I'm so happy and grateful and thankful to my colleagues that we brought this issue forward. I think all of us were in a mind meld and sync that led this to happen. So that's, that's as good as it gets. So with that, I will ask City Manager Hall and Assistant City Manager Cortez Martinez to give the report, beginning with City Manager Hall. Take it away.
Mayor and Council, we do have one housekeeping item. The resolution twenty-two-one fourteen that established the public hearing for the sewer, it was amended to make sure that that public hearing would be held virtually rather than an in-person meeting. And we need to clarify that. So if I could get a clarifying vote, the resolution itself, only it included that there would be a live meeting. At this point in time, we, we don't think that that's going to happen. So we'd like to clarify that if we could, if we could get a clarifying motion to amend that agenda to be a virtual meeting.
Can we get a motion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, Spriggs would move that we so amend the resolutions so that the resolution provides for a virtual hearing as opposed to an in-person one.
And DeDina will second.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, seconded by DeDina, to clarify in the resolution twenty-two-one dash fourteen that the public hearing will be held virtually. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, Mr. Hall, we cut you off in mid-comment. So continue, please, on Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, two things, Mayor. I, I wished I wouldn't have had to do that because you did a great buildup into this. And, and staff agrees, this is the most important thing facing our community. And we're really excited to be here. I also want to echo the comments that have been made by other council members and Mr. Seiverson tonight. I know Captain Bill is, is watching us tonight. This is near and dear to his heart. I talked to him just about ten days ago about this very issue and was really sorry to, to hear about that. And our prayers are with his family and with, with Captain Bill is watching down on us tonight, I'm sure. So, Mayor and Council, I. Sorry about that. I pushed the wrong button. I wanted to start out with a thank you for the Boys and Girls Club. For the last seven or eight years now, they have done a great job in providing recreational services to our community. They filled in at a time that was very challenging for the city. I know it stretched their resources, but they did a really good job. And we want to make sure that the Boys and Girls Clubs of South County really gets our appreciation. And not only that, they have, they have indicated that they still have great interest in being part of our recreation program for many years to come. So we really look forward to, we're continuing our work. One of the things we wanted to talk a little bit about is the structure of how the recreation program works. And a little bit about how the committees work. Because I know that just recently you appointed some new members to your Parks and Recreation Committee. So we wanted to make sure that the mayor and council, the public, as well as the members of the Parks and Recreation Committee, they, they understand how the system works. And we had a chance to talk with the Parks and Recreation Committee on Monday evening, had a great conversation with them. But of course, we have the residents of Imperial Beach that elect a mayor and council. And the mayor and council have appointed in Imperial Beach, there are three committees that you seek to, you seek recommendations from in, in order to make policy for the city. One of those is the Design Review Board. We also have the Tidlands Advisory Committee. And then we have the Parks and Recreation Committee. And they work to provide the recommendations for policies for the city council to consider as you create recreation policies and, and parks policies. On the other side, of course, you have the administrative side of the city and the city council has two employees. You have a city manager and a city attorney that are appointed by the council. And then the city employees work with the city manager to implement the policies of the city council. So as the city manager, my side of the management team is to deal with the policies and to work with the city council, the residents, our external partners and others to, to formulate policy for the community. And one of those things is to engage in the community and seek input from our residents, the kind of recreation programs they would like to see. We, we need to offer support to the Parks and Recreation Committee and, and they have an important task in front of them that I'll be talking about in just a second. We need to prepare, which really is, comes to the most important thing that the city manager needs to do. And that's to prepare and present policy recommendations to the city council and then find ways to implement those policies in the direction of the city council. Well, the way that the Parks and Recreation Committee and the city manager present this, these policy recommendations in terms of recreation would be the creation of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So that we have a clear planning document that helps us to guide the future of recreation in the community. So we'll, we'll prepare guidelines for future park improvements. We will also prepare guidelines for recreation programs and the objectives. I know one of the objectives that has been stated by all of the council members is to make sure that we have a recreation program that addresses the needs of all of our residents, young and old and in great physical health, people who are interested in sports and people who are interested in passive activities, perhaps walking clubs or birding clubs. So we want to make sure that we have a very comprehensive recreation program. That will require a lot of research and analysis. We need to get a lot of input from our residents and the users of our recreation program. We also want to look at the comparative best practices of other communities in the area. So we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel with recreation. There are some great recreation programs right here in San Diego County. I know that our staff on the administrative side of things has been meeting and working with some of those communities to make sure that we're implementing best practices and, and learning from the other communities that have thriving recreation programs. We also want to make sure that we provide to the city council an inventory of our assets and the conditions and the improvements that need to be made so that we can have a thriving recreation program. We need to make sure that we assess the programming on a regular basis. And, and we want to make sure that we have a vision for where we're heading. Remember, we have a, a very small recreation program now. We're going to have to start small and build. But we want to have a vision. So we, we are leading to what will continue to be a growing and thriving program as our recreation program continues to grow and improve. And then finally, we want to make sure that we have identified implementation strategies. And sometimes that includes funding. That might include working with residents on, on different types of, of things. And, and so all of this will be pulled together into a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And some of those components will help us to put together plans for the seven park sites that we have in the community. You can see them on your screen here. We have Pier Plaza, Dunes Park, Rema Park, the Sports Park, Veterans Park, the Triangle Park or the Bicentennial Triangle, Tepal Park, and then we have some pocket parks, very small pocket parks. But we also have regional facilities. One of the reasons people come to an Imperial Beach is to visit our beach. And although it's not a park, it needs to be an important part of our recreation program. We have the Tijuana River Estuary. There's some great trails out in there. There's opportunities to see very rare birds, especially this time of year. And so we want to make sure that we have a very comprehensive program that includes not just our parks, but some of the regional facilities that we're blessed to have in our community. And then we also have, of course, wildlife refuges on both sides of our community. So we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of that. So as part of these recommendations, for instance, there is a, a push by the Parks and Recreation Committee of how can we energize and get more use out of a facility like Veterans Park? And one of the ideas that has been floated and suggested is maybe we have a splash pad in Veterans Park. So we can, we can prepare some policies and some recommendations to the city council, who can then provide that vision. And then on the administrative side of the ledger, we can implement that. who can then provide that vision, and then on the administrative side of the ledger, we can implement that. But all those, all these kinds of things can be captured in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. You saw tonight, I took out the sailboats, I, I, and added our climbing wall. And that climbing wall is about exactly how high I can climb on a climbing wall. So we just want to make sure that we have very up-to-date, user-friendly, ADA-accessible facilities in our community for everyone to use. And so we want to make sure that that's part of our vision in the plan as well. And when we reach out and need to do some of the surveys, we want to constantly survey our residents. So here's one that was recently done by the Parks and Recreation Committee, and I wanted to point out a few things. So most of the respondents are from Imperial Beach. In fact, about 96% of the people who responded were from Imperial Beach. But when you look at the primary language spoken in your home, 96% said it was English, only 3.5% said it was Spanish. And then surprisingly, the next, the third highest language of the respondents was Portuguese. Now, I, I, we have done a lot of other work in our community, and I believe that the primary language spoken in our homes in Imperial Beach are much higher on Spanish, and I think that our third highest is probably Tagalog. So this teaches us something. We need to do better outreach to our community. So these, these surveys become very important, not only for, for data, but making sure that we're reaching out to all areas of our community. One of the other slides I pulled out that, that gives me some concern, excuse me. You can see that about 25% of the people in our community have participated in fee-based recreation in the past two years. I think that that should be reversed. We want to make sure that about 75% of the people have participated in, in it, and, and instead, maybe 24 have not. But even more concerning is the chart on the right that indicates that a lot of those people that have participated in fee-based recreation have done it in other cities. You can see that if you add up San Diego, Coronado, and Chula Vista, they would probably exceed the number of people that have participated in programs in Imperial Beach. So we just want to make sure that we are providing these programs here at home to the best of our ability and grow our program to maybe recapture some of the pity, people who are going to other cities for their recreation. And then, of course, there's a lot of survey information that comes back about the types of facilities that we'd like to see in our recreation program. Finally, the work, the, one of the roles of the city managers to work with the city council for budget allocation. Of course, there will be an annual allocation for personnel and operating costs. We certainly want to work towards having the programs pay for themselves. And, and then hopefully, some of the fees might even be able to offset some of our personnel costs. But certainly, one of the really important things will be for our, our recreation personnel to be seeking funding, either through grants, or maybe rental of facilities to cover some of the other costs that, that will be associated with the program. And finally, we'll need to, to search for and look for funding options to upgrade facilities to an acceptable condition. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the administrative side, to the Assistant City Manager, to finish the presentation. So thank you very much.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Assistant City Manager Cortez. Since we're in a moment of thinking, I also want to thank the Parks and Recreation Committee and Tyler Foltz, Raina Yala, Chris Elmer, and other staff that have worked really hard getting us where we're here. So my role would be administrative. That is going to be the recruitment, the hiring of Recreation Director. With that, we're going to continue to review any assessments on facilities, the administration of the recreation programs, and then park safety. Park safety is mainly under Marines Department, which you've chased. However, at some point, both of them will complement as we expand rentals in the parks or even adding programs in the parks, just for safety of our community. I, here in front of you, you see pictures of our only building that we have for sports and recreation. The first picture on your left of the screen, I want to describe that we have deferred maintenance on the building. As you know, the current, the, the sports park is being used for COVID testing at the moment, which is very important during these times in our community. This first picture doesn't do justice, you know, after the, the staff did a site visit. They're not urinals. They're actually water fountains. The picture in the middle, you can see that there are broken windows, and they're boarded up. And then the picture to your far right, outdated restrooms, of old, you know, urinals with urine stain on the ground and outdated appliances, I'm sorry, water sinks and things like that. Then we move into the gym area. Soundproof, broken or outdated. The gym floor is not proper. You know, it's made of concrete, not proper for basketball playing. If somebody falls and there's an injury, that's, it can be very damaging. So it does need to be upgraded to a multi-use facility. The picture to the right is, has recently been upgraded. It's the only room available at the moment to have some type of class or program. The problem with this is, or the entire building is that there is no proper ventilation, poor acoustics, no windows, and there's only one exit door. So for certain programs, you don't want to leave that door open, for instance, yoga, you know, right where you have adjacent to a skate park and then right in front of parking. So I want to begin by saying that although the Recreation Department was dissolved in 2014, and we don't have anything in place right now as far as the city of, under the umbrella of the city of Imperial Beach, and we're gonna be sort of starting from scratch and, as City Manager Hall now inform, it's a buildup, right? You're, over time, it's gonna get bigger and better. But, you know, we do have successful programs in the community. One of them is the, the Girl Softball, the Little League. The Junior Lifeguard Program, our senior center. We do have the amenities and the facilities such as the soccer field. There are opportunities there to rent those out to different associations that, that can bring programs to our community. We have the outdoor fitness. We have, again, outdoor parks where we, especially right now during COVID and summer permits it, weather permits it, that we can begin those programs outdoors. We have the pier and the water. One of the ideas that were mentioned during our briefings is, you know, including myself, I can use this class. I, I don't know how to fish, you know, and we can have a class of teaching kids or adults how to fish. We have the water, you know, paddle boards, that kind of thing. We have the bike trails. We have bike paths. And then we have the estuary, you know, good partnership to provide maybe an educational class, bird watching, you know, anything environmental and natural, since we already have those resources in our community. Again, the objective with the formation of the Recreation Department would be not only having our own infrastructure, but expanding. Not only we do, we have the parks and the, and the trails in our facility, but we also have, for instance, the IBAC program. We have a YSO and other organizations seeking to provide contract with the city of Imperial Beach. We have the school districts, Sweetwater, you know, the pool is, it's on the works, and we've been having discussions about a joint use agreement. And then we have also the elementary schools. And as Commissioner Hall mentioned, Boys and Girls Club has also expand, express interest in continuing their partnership with the city of Imperial Beach. So tonight, what staff is asking and the administrative side is direction to recruit and hire a Recreation Director immediately. And in the policy side is direction to prepare a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Again, funding has been identified and will be presented to the city council next month during your budget workshop. And with that, if, that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions that we may answer.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that from both of you. City Clerk Kelly, before we start with the council questions or comments, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one written comment and a raised hand. I'll go to the raised hand first. It's Eric Cyverson. Mr. Cyverson, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself and begin.
Yes, my name is Eric Cyverson, Imperial Beach native, current resident of unincorporated San Diego County, but I do have a vested interest. I have young nieces and nephews, and a young son, and my mother, and my brother-in-law, my sister, all who live in Imperial Beach and who are dependent upon recreation activities for mental and physical well-being, of which in the city of Imperial Beach, everything mentioned is amazing. And everything that is amazing is run by people other than the city, which is basically the history of Imperial Beach. I'm a Little League guy, and Little League has been amazing. If you want to see true Imperial Beach, go to a Little League game on Saturday. That is true Imperial Beach. That is built by the people, for the people, and used by the people. The fact that this city two years ago could give $250,000 to Monarch Global to enact some kind of amazing surge de Dina foreign policy, yet we don't have a recreation plan is disappointing. $60,000 tonight will be spent of 60 of city funds on that resiliency for the South Bay grant of whatever. You guys spend money like crazy. The mayor traveled to Mexico City, Washington DC, and Cabo San Lucas in 2019 to further his foreign policy, but we have no Recreation Department. You should tell us what the funding is now, or you should just come up with a quarter million dollars a year right now, vote on it, dedicate it, and start building for the youth of this city. Start building something, or give the money to the people and let they build it, because they've already proven for 50 years that they can get it done. Mayor DeDina, you've had six and you've done nothing. Nothing. Thank you.
The next raised hand is Dante Pamantone. Mr. Pamantone, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes and begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I just want to say, as a local resident here at Seaside Point, I have nine-year-old boy and an 11-year-old boy, raising them here in Imperial Beach. This is one of the reasons we came and invested in Imperial Beach because of the outdoor recreational opportunities that Imperial Beach is known for. The other important thing that I want to follow up on Eric's point about nonprofit organizations running our various events around Imperial Beach has always been a local mainstay of what makes Imperial Beach great. I 100% totally agree with, with Eric that when a city gets involved with running programs and creating bigger government and spending more money, it takes away the character of our city. And I just wanted to, I, I'm in favor of coordinating and organizing, you know, the various nonprofits that are, have been serving Imperial Beach for decades, ever since the establishment of this, of Imperial Beach. And I would offer my services. I have a business degree from San Diego State, and I know logistics, and I know how to manage groups and people. And I would, I would do it on a, you know, shoestring budget, just for my time to, to organize this thing. So I'd like to put my name in the hat as the main person, but you don't need to spend this money and just keep on building it up and just creating more government and more government positions. I think, I think the community has a heart with volunteerism, with, with getting people together, locals for the locals, by the locals. I mean, this is, this is what Imperial Beach has known, and I'm so proud of Imperial Beach. I'm so blessed that my family and I are able to live here in this beautiful beach town. It is a recreational haven, and, but I believe just what Eric said, that this is a, this can be run by these nonprofits, these, these volunteers that are all locals here in Imperial Beach. Thank you.
Are there additional comments? Thanks to everyone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one written comment, and it's from Bob Miller, a resident of Imperial Beach. And he says, "Good evening, Mayor Serge DeDina and councilmembers. The city of Imperial Beach is a poster city for the wide-open spaces. Outdoor activities are abundant, and a Recreation Department would help provide the services needed to take full advantage of our great year-round climate. Please give consideration for a Recreation Department. Sincerely, Robert."
Great. Are there any additional public comments at all?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was the final comment.
Great. Thanks, everybody. And so thanks again for the, the presentation. And we can start with Mr. Fisher, probably appropriate. Fisher, take it away. Any questions or comments you have?
You know, not too many questions, I guess, but I'm just super excited that we're really getting to the point where this is moving forward. I think that every time we talk about Parks and Recreation, the one phrase that sticks in my mind is community engagement on all levels. I think we all agree that anything that's created needs to spread a pretty wide spectrum of age ranges, activities, you know, the arts, the sports. I think a little, we can't have a little bit of something for everybody, but I think that we can have, you know, at least a good supply of activities. So I, I'm in favor of making sure that we, we get the right person to, to direct the Parks and Recreation Department and really listens to the community engagement and the outreach and the concerns and the ideas they have. And, you know, I, I know we're, we're working on moving forward this. Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I just show something real quick? Is that, is that appropriate?
Sure, as long as it's the picture of you playing in a Parks, Parks program when you were a kid. Is that what it is?
No, it's, it's actually close. You know, we talk about community, and I gotta show you.
Go ahead, sure.
I have a, a good gentleman here in the, the city who I found in the alley next to my house. We were chatting, and he's just an amazing guy. Some of you might know him, Pete the Painter. He does the curbs and stuff like that. But he also is a tennis guy, and he's got me so enthusiastic. And on Monday, he dropped this by my house. I gotta show you, you know, what. Let's see, if I can, oh, it's, oh, my background's blue. And the, he actually did a scale drawing of the Parks and Rec Center with tennis courts put on there. And unfortunately, the courts are blue, and he, he just is so passionate. And I think that what we'll find as we move forward, we're gonna find these people who have such great passion and want to be part of what we're doing, and I think that's gonna be how we're gonna succeed as a city, as we work together. And like Dante mentioned, you know, just bring people in, let people be part of the volunteerism and then be directed. I know that we can't have everybody, because if you made stew by putting everything you had in your pantry cupboard in there, you wouldn't have very good stew in there. You have to be methodical, and you have to know what you're putting in, so you know what you're getting out of there. But I really think there's an opportunity for participation, and, you know, it comes down to, to listening to the residents. So I, I'm super excited. I really hope that we, we find somebody who can direct and lead this department. I know I trust Andy and Erica. Both will, will interview like crazy and do the right thing to get the right person here. So I, I'm super excited. Thanks so much. Glad to have this conversation.
Thanks, Mr. Fisher. Councilmember Spriggs, I mean, Mayor Potem Spriggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great proposal. It's, it's, I mean, the time has come for us to turn our attention to our recreation services and, and infrastructure, and take, take the step that we all wanted to take back when we, I think before most of the current council members were on the city council, and we had to make the budget cuts that eliminated the, our Department of Recreation. That was a sad time. And, you know, we, we had had, there were, there were budget cuts in general, and plus we'd lost our redevelopment budget as well. So our ability to pay part of the city staff out of redevelopment funds was eliminated, and we, as well as had revenue shortfalls. So that resulted in the sad occasion of, of having to contract out, so to speak, our Recreation Department. Now it's, it's good that even though that has, that has worked to a good extent, we can, we can move forward with recreating our own Recreation Department. It's just, that meets the needs of Imperial Beach. So I like the idea of... So I like the idea of getting public input. I like the idea of using the Park and Rec Committee to lead the process of helping to develop a strategic plan for recreation in Imperial Beach. And I like the idea of going ahead and finding a director who is energetic and excited by the opportunity to help shape the recreation program and department in Imperial Beach. The fact that somebody can come in early on and help shape this is an exciting thing, you would think, for the right candidate, and might even allow us to get, you know, a younger, more energetic person who wants to really grow into the job and help shape, you know, IB's recreational future. So I think this is really a good opportunity for us. I would just say, the final thing I'd say is, the quality of the programs and the people running the programs, and we're going to probably sub out a lot of the activities and programs, the quality of those programs and the proven track record of the providers, whether they're doing exercise programs, or yoga, or what have you, will really determine the popularity and the reach of our recreation program. It's the program that really counts. I'm worried about spending too much money on facilities and hardware, and when what people really get enjoyment out of is the simplest thing, a great program interacting with other kids or other adults around a well-organized activity that is succeeding in its popularity and its fun. When you have that, it almost doesn't matter how new and glassy your schoolhouse is if what's inside is really a great experience. For, I'm making the analogy to a schoolhouse, you know, you can have a great edifice, but a poor teacher and no learning materials, and, you know, nothing going on inside. Well, it's what goes on inside, or outside in our case as well, that really matters. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to really reach our whole community, all the different age segments with activities and programs that they want. And I'll be looking very carefully at the cost estimates for all of those necessary improvements and repairs that the assistant city manager pointed out regarding the gymnasium, the recreation center. That's going to be a big challenge for us when they come back with what it's going to take. I know, just having done so many different facilities in my job at the university, that it's always going to cost more than we think, and we'll have to make sure that we keep it affordable so that we can concentrate on the program side and not spend all of our resources on the physical side. So those are my comments. This is an exciting time, and I'm really looking forward to this process moving forward and us getting a great recreation program during our time on the city council. This is going to be something that we will all be able to take pride in. Thank you.
Councilmember Regardy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with what my colleagues mentioned. I think that this is something that we can all certainly agree on, is that we all want a community where everyone feels safe, where everyone can thrive, where seniors can age, where families can access programs that are engaging, that are culturally inclusive. I'm very supportive of this idea of bringing on a program director, of creating a master plan. I want to thank staff for all the time that they've invested into this effort. I know that there's many hours of work that they put into this. I would just like to suggest that we do an even better job at engaging our community. And I believe Mr. Hall alluded to it with one of the slides, the surveys that were provided, where we had a very low response of Spanish speakers. And, you know, having gone through this pandemic and working through the mayor's COVID task force, that was one of the things that we didn't realize, is that a lot of folks were filing through the cracks because of the digital divide, because they may not be able to understand how to operate emails or be inclined to respond to mail, hard mail surveys. So I would like for us to think outside the box and take it even further, and maybe even, you know, secure a grant, or even volunteers that could actually, once COVID is over, go and knock on doors, because so many of our working families don't have the time to come to council, don't have the time to answer a survey. And that's, I think, truly the only way that we're really going to reach everyone in our community, and this will be a community-based effort, collective effort, that will be beneficial for all of our residents. And same with the cost, right? I mean, our staff, I think, is some of the best in the county at securing grants, so I know that they're going to be spearheading that effort relentlessly. And I know that we can also consider fee-based programs. And just as a reminder, our Measure I, that was overwhelmingly supported by our community, more 70% approval, in the measure, it did read that the funding from this measure would go to neighborhood community enhancement programs, parks, senior programs, and youth and after-school programs. So that could be another source of revenue that we may want to start thinking about as well. So, yeah, very excited, and thank you all for being so supportive of this effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Labor Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As being a previous member of the Park and Recs Committee, I'm very excited to see it moving in this direction. As far as selecting the full-time individual, that's going to be a tough task, because the individuals that have been involved with the Park and Recs previously, some unbelievable people with some experience and really great people. So I look forward to that process, and good luck to the individuals that are applying for that position. Thank you.
Great, thanks, everybody, and thanks, Erica and Andy, for that presentation, and all the staff that contributed to this, and again, my council colleagues for their enthusiastic support and endorsement for moving forward. Just a couple of things. For some reason, roads don't pay for themselves. We don't charge residents tolls for roads, but somehow, we think that Parks and Rec programs need to, quote, "pay for themselves." We've talked about this before, Mr. Hall. I believe the opposite, that this is the greatest, single-most important investment we can make in our community, and we just have to figure out how to make it run and work. But the issue of equity, this issue of equity that people love to talk about in California is really clear. It's wealthy communities have world-class recreational facilities and programs that residents can afford, and cities like IB have nothing. And we have a polluted beach our kids can't use, and parks were improving. And our seniors have an old rundown senior center, and Coronado has, you know, a lawn bowling facility. They got a federal bailout grant for it back in 2008, and, you know, two swimming pools that a lot of our residents use and pay a lot of money to use. So this is an investment we're making in the future for our community and the well-being of all our residents. It's the most important thing, besides public safety and public health and having a job, being able to raise your family and good infrastructure. There is not a single great city or small city in this country without a thriving Parks and Recreation program. For me, you know, immigrant parents who came to IB, parents that have any money, I spent my time at the Parks and Rec program, spent my time at the Boys and Girls Club. I spent my time at White MCA Camp Surf, and I took free swimming lessons from Marvist High, offered by the city and our school district, and then became a lifeguard to put myself through college when I was 17. So, you know, these are life-saving and life-changing programs, and every resident needs to have access to them, from the oldest or the most, our most senior, most distinguished, to our youngest. And it's a way that we bring each other together. So my only comment besides that is, how quickly are we going to get this going? We are facing the greatest crisis this country has ever faced. It's a crisis of public health. It's an economic crisis. It's a cultural crisis. It's a social welfare crisis, and it's a well-being crisis, right? People are desperate for connections. They're desperate to get involved. They're desperate to be engaged, and so we need to give those opportunities. So let's hire some, first, let's hire the best person possible, world-class Parks and Rec director, someone who can hit the ground running, who's entrepreneurial, a self-starter, and like, is going to thrive doing this. Superstar, gold medal winner, right? Number two, and that they start something quickly. I want to do a master plan, but if it takes three years to do, then we have failed. So let's make sure we hire someone, get the program going, and then we can start working on the plan, but we got to get this going. And then, I know we'll be talking to the school district about joint use program for the swimming pool, but, you know, the leverage part, work with the nonprofit partners, working with our school district partners and all the other partners, is really important, including the County of San Diego and the state of California and the federal government. And frankly, thank God we're getting that federal money after the federal government botched the last administration, botched the pandemic rollout or the pandemic response. They botched the economic recovery program, and our city got cut out of that. Thank God we're getting some money so we can invest back in our residents who have suffered greatly. And those who have suffered the most have been kids and our seniors. They have been cut off, and they're not in school, and this is going to be considered one of the greatest crises in modern American history, right? And so, thank God, we have some resources now to finally address this crisis in our community and provide some resources that help people and change lives and keep people safe and connected. So you can tell I'm passionate about this, and it's made a difference in my life and my kids' lives, and it's something our residents really need and want. So again, thanks to everyone, our council colleagues, for your support, and our city staff, and our residents who are waiting. And obviously, you're right, Councilmember Gary, you need to do a lot better on reaching out to all our residents. So anyway, with that, I don't think we need to do anything else except end this discussion, and unless there's any additional public comments, City Clerk Kelly?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, and we will move on to item number three, and that's Resolution 2021-16 Authorizing Professional Services Contract with Nexus Planning and Research for Consultant Support for the Bay Shore Bikeway Resiliency Project and Environmental Natural Resources Director Helmer. We give the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I didn't bring any slides prepared for this item, but this is really a follow-on item from what you approved at your last city council meeting. At the last meeting, you authorized the city to accept and appropriate funds from the Ocean Protection Council. It's a grant we're receiving, and the project is for the Bay Shore Bikeway Resiliency Project. And this action today is merely just awarding a consultant contract to Nexus Planning. Nexus Planning has been involved in multiple planning efforts around our region, specifically San Diego Bay, and working with the Port of San Diego on their sea level rise, and actually involved in the city of Imperial Beach's sea level rise study that we did in 2016. So very familiar with our city, with issues we have to face. And this contract is necessary in order to move forward as quickly as possible on this project. So I'm standby, ready to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Before we continue, City Clerk Kelly, do we have any public comments?
I do not see any raised, oh.
Great.
There is a raised hand. There is one raised hand. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There's one raised hand, and it's Dante. Dante, please unmute yourself and begin. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Jackie. I was just wondering, was this item going to be removed? And what are we talking about tonight for this? Thank you.
Mayor, this is Manager Hall, and I apologize. I needed to make an explanation of why this item was removed from the agenda. I had a chance to talk to Councilman Fisher before the meeting, and the last time this item was on your agenda was at your last meeting. It was removed for some technical reasons, and so we had placed it on consent. I think Councilman Fisher felt like, because it was not on consent the first time, that we should hear this item on the regular agenda. So it was simply removed from the consent calendar and put on the regular agenda so that it would be consistent with the way it was on your agenda at your last meeting. So that's the purpose for removing it from consent and placing it on here. There's no other reason other than to be consistent with the last meeting.
Okay, great, thanks. Are there any questions or comments from City Council?
Mr. Mayor, Ed Spriggs, I would just ask the city manager or to give us a sense as to the contracting process for the contract award. One of the things that I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, but this action tonight also includes authorizing the entry into a contract for the study and other related work to be done for this fairly significant project. I think it's upwards of $400,000. It's very important for our planning for the north part of the community, the shoreline on the bay. And as Director Helmer mentioned, addressing sea level rise, we've not previously devoted enough attention in our prior sea level rise studies and in our LCP work to this part of Imperial Beach, because we didn't have the funding. Now we do. And, but I am interested in hearing whether this was a competitive contract and what the bids were, because it is a significant amount of money. And it's public money, even though it isn't all Imperial Beach money. Our matching share is relatively small, but it's still grant funding, and we should be as good a stewards of grant funding as we are our own funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spriggs. This is Manager Hall, and I'll defer to Director Helmer in just a moment to go through the selection process. But I would remind the city council, this is a professional services agreement, much like you have one with your city attorney, your city engineer, and others. The importance of this is not to take the lowest bidder. You need to make sure that you are getting the most qualified people when you are doing project design. So again, this is a professional services agreement, and this is not the lowest qualified bidder process. And so I just want to kind of clarify that there's a slight difference there. But I'll turn some time over to Director Helmer, who can tell you how they went through and identified those qualifications and made sure that we are getting a competitive price, but yet make sure we have qualified people working on the project.
City Manager Hall, thank you very much. This is Director Helmer. And yes, the process of which to apply for this grant has actually been about a year-long process. The Ocean Protection Council funding has been lined up for a while, and part of my job really is to work and coordinate in a region to put projects together that are competitive at a statewide scale. And part of this was putting a proposal together, and I was working with a small group of consultants. I mean, there's a whole team of folks we've been working with in the region to put together some proposals that we submitted to the state. State came back, wanted some comments and revisions to it, and had revised proposals until we finally got to the project of which that had been awarded funds. So this has kind of been an iterative process over the last year, and I've been working with Nexus Planning, kind of as the lead in helping facilitate some of these discussions, mainly because of the connections we've had from our sea level rise study, from the Port Master Plan, from our process of working with the port on their sea level rise assessments. That's how the city's been introduced to Nexus Planning. That's the process. They're clearly been the most qualified consultant up to this part of the year process, which you have not been, it's been just kind of in-kind service at that time. So that's been the process of going for a RFQ, and there is an opportunity to go out for a request for qualifications, which we have done in similar projects. I guess our water quality improvement plans or WQIP process is an example where we do solicit a rest for qualifications. But this process necessitated and expedited start because the state came back a couple of months ago and said, "Hey, we have funding, this funding round, if you can get your project ready to go as quickly as possible." And that's kind of what we're doing now, is we're looking to get going on this project ASAP. We're already having some coordination meetings right now in anticipation of getting all the paperwork lined up at the state. So it's kind of a long answer to your question, but Nexus Planning really is the most qualified individual that we've been working with for this project.
Thank you very much. That's just a good answer to the question. I appreciate it.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the City Council? Great. With that, unless there are additional?
If I could, sorry, my one button wasn't working. I do have a question for Manager Hall. I'm just curious. When we review when public service contracts are awarded... is there, is there, is there a notation of who's choosing the public service? People that were, I guess, were hiring in a sense. And just, you know, I wonder if that's important for us to note when we discuss these matters? Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Like tonight, we make sure that you guys are aware of any of these public service agreements. I'm sorry, professional services agreements. So yeah, staff, we don't, for instance, approve the professional services agreement with the attorney firm. That's something the city council does. We don't do it with the engineering firm. The city council does that. And we don't do it with this firm. That's what this item is on the agenda for. So if the city council is either uncomfortable after reading through the qualifications of this consultant, then we would seek another consultant. But yeah, all of the professional services agreements are approved by the city council. And the reason that we typically have professional service agreements are because we don't have that expertise with our full-time staff. In this case, we don't have a hydrologist on staff because we wouldn't use them on a regular basis. We'll use them on this specific project and we need that skill set for this specific project, but we wouldn't need that year-round or on an ongoing basis. And that's usually why we hire professional services agreements. And for instance, in the, in the, in the city engineer, what we, the reason we have a professional services agreement with NV5 is because we can get a team of engineers rather than having to hire a civil engineer, a mechanical engineer, an electrical engineer. We can hire, we can have a contract with an engineering firm that can provide all of those skill sets with one contract. And so again, that's why typically we have these professional services agreements, but they are all approved by the city council.
You know, I appreciate that explanation and it does help. I guess my question, I didn't word it very well. In a case like this, I'm assuming that Mr. Helmer is the one who approved the qualifications for this contract. And is that something that, you know, we should keep, be mindful of in the era of transparency to kind of coordinate a name with the consultant firms or, you know, the service companies that we're, that we're continuing to hire?
Yeah, I'm sorry I misunderstood your question. You're correct. There was a, there was a team that reviewed this and Director Helmer could tell you who looked at these, who looked at the applications. I was not part of that team. He can probably tell you. But yeah, it's never an individual. It's always a team of people who look at the applications and do interviews and then choose the most appropriate person to recommend to the city council.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I appreciate that because that really helps me understand the process as a new council member. I I'm unsure sometimes of the processes. So that's great. I don't need Mr. Helmer to to explain how this one in particular worked. I just think the process was important to me. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, then I'd like to enter in a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-16 to award a professional services contract to Nexus Planning and Research for the Bay Shore Bikeway Resiliency Project. And is there a motion? City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I missed who made the motion.
I think Mr. Fisher made the motion and then Mr. Spriggs second. Is that correct?
It was a close, close finish, but I think that's right.
Okay.
Thank you. This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Fisher, second by Spriggs, to adopt Resolution Number 2021-16. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote? Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Did you get Councilmember Fisher?
Did you, did you miss him?
Did I?
I am so sorry. I thought I said Councilmember Fisher. Okay. I am so sorry. So Councilmember Fisher, you said aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried unanimously.
That was just, we were testing you, Mr. Fisher, because you beat Councilmember Spriggs in the in the motion race. Anyway. And then before I, I'm sorry, you're going to finish the vote, Kelly?
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then before I adjourn the meeting, are there any additional public comments that we missed?
There is just one written comment and it's from Edward Rackmanis. The subject says neighborhood cleanup, March 13 through March 16. And the body of the message says, I request that a representative of the city work with American Legion, BFW, Fleet Reserve to assist homeless veterans in Imperial Beach to seek assistance with the Veterans Administration Regional Office. And that's the end of his message and the final comment.
Great. Well, thank you so much, everyone. Thanks, everyone participating. Thanks to my city council colleagues and the city staff and everyone from the public. And this meeting is now adjourned at 8:05 PM. Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your St. Patrick's Day.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.